Welcome everyone to the City Council Workshop regarding some issues at the airport. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We will start with public comment, and just for those of you who may not be familiar with it, we do have two public comment periods. The first one is limited to those items that are on our agenda this afternoon. You'll have up to five minutes to speak on that. And then a last public comment period at the end of the meeting where you can speak on any issue that you wish. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Yes, sir.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name's Rich Moynihan. I'm a Boulder City resident for over forty-plus years. I've been flying for over fifty years between the Navy, the airlines, and general aviation. I did two terms on the Airport Advisory Committee. I'm president of the Boulder City Airport Association, and then I'm also president of our small group of hangars, Blue Sky. I appreciate your interest and your involvement in the airport. It's kind of a welcome change to see the city council getting involved with this. The problem is that the only information that you get is from city staff, what they want you to hear, you know? And some of those are examples of the fuel farm, the commercial leases, and I'm sure other people will bring those up. I don't want to waste my time on it. Finally, we have a new airport manager with some general aviation experience, and we hope this is going to be a good experience for all of us. Most of this stuff happened before his watch. As far as I'm concerned, the last two airport managers should have never been hired. They had no general aviation experience whatsoever. Both made numerous mistakes. We're all involved here with the airport because we're stakeholders, and I think you can see by the attendance in the room today, a lot of people are interested in this. I'm afraid that if we lose ownership of our hangars, the city will lose our participation in the airport, i.e. the Airport Advisory Committee and other committees, you know, safety and other things that we participate in. The staff might like that because they won't have anybody looking over them and questioning them, but I don't think that's something the city council wants. You guys were elected, and a new regime brought in probably because of that, what the community wants and community participation. As stakeholders, we want to renew, extend, or make new ground leases, whatever you want to call it, at a reasonable rate increase. That adds stability to our lives, and with a rate increase in the ground lease, the airport can make as much money as if they took over the hangars and had to pay all the expenses. You know, the airport, as per the FAA, it needs to be self-sufficient. It's self-sufficient now, and we want it to stay that way. We wanted to save up money for the projects it needs, but as the general aviation community, you know, we don't want to pay for a lot of stuff that the commercial operators are using. We want them to pay their own way. We've been working on renewing these leases for over fifteen years, because when we bought our hangars, if we didn't buy them brand-new, we assumed the lease, and everybody says, "Well, you assumed the lease. You knew what you're getting into." And most of us did, some of us didn't, but we had no choice. If you wanted a hangar, you had to buy it and assume the lease. Well, that's why for the last fifteen years or so, we've been working on trying to get that changed. What we really want is stability that comes with the ownership. You know, just not our, we don't want a rental program and rental lease rates based on the whim of the current, you know, city staff. We're encouraged. The last city manager and the Public Works Director, when the airport was under him, indicated the leases would be renewed. You know, it wasn't set in concrete by any means. Then the consultant, Aeroplex, who acted like the airport manager for about a year, told everyone that the airport didn't really want to be in the hangar renting business. So people made decisions based on this information, even though it wasn't set in stone. They either bought or sold, or not sold or not bought, based on that info. What we would like is you to give the city staff direction as to what you want, and we're, as a group, trying to influence that, give you the pros and cons of everything. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment?
Good afternoon, council. For the record, Fred Volz. These comments will relate to Agenda Item 2 today. In reviewing the finances for the airport, and more particularly, the operating income, absent from the individual line items are takeoff and landing fees. Unless it is a private landing strip, it is hard to fathom that Boulder City would not be charging those who use the municipal airport takeoff and landing fees. Per the FAA, any revenue generated by an airport that is not used for airport operations must be remitted to the FAA. During city staff's presentations today, perhaps they can explain this absence of listed revenue. The city's utility functions are charged hefty administrative overhead fees via an undisclosed formula. Nowhere in the expense category of the airport is there a charge for administrative overhead. Why is the airport receiving preferential treatment and not required to pay for city hall administrative services it clearly uses? Looking at the latest version of the city's five-year capital improvement plan, it shows $28,355,400 of airport projects that are unfunded and have been placed in the future projects section on page eighteen with no explanation. However, the October 8th spreadsheet version of the same plan indicates zero dollars of FAA grants, when, in fact, the FAA is likely to pay ninety percent of most project costs if Boulder City successfully submits the appropriate applications and justifications. Where Boulder City will come up with $3.8 million of general fund money, $2 million plus $1.8 million in staff's PowerPoint presentation, to make up the alleged difference suggests we cannot afford to run a municipal airport. In addition, page two of the January 14th, 2020 staff report indicates airport capital projects under the Airport Finance tab of $20 million and $1.8 million over the next ten years versus $28,355,400 in the five-year capital improvement plan that should project individual spending by initiative beyond the five years as a summary total or a discrepancy between the two reports of $6,555,400. Why don't the numbers tie since future years' projects should be properly accounted? The airport recently submitted its annual audit information to the FAA. It was received by the FAA just last week. It is surprising this document was not included in today's package for review by interested parties and council members. These inconsistent numbers and the lack of specialized staff knowledge bring into question whether Boulder City should be in the airport business at all. As with the municipal swimming pool, few residents use or derive any benefit from the local airport. The airport does not bring tourists to town who will spend money in our stores, hotels, and restaurants. Those Las Vegas Valley tourists completely bypass commercial Boulder City on their way to and from the airport for aerial tours of the Grand Canyon, Hoover Dam, and other regional sites. From a strategic standpoint, Boulder City has given no consideration in over thirty years to the possibility of selling its municipal airport to Clark County. Even if it ultimately proves untenable, we should begin conversations regarding the sale of the airport to Clark County and see where they might go and how they could mutually benefit both parties. Clark County already operates McCarran, North Las Vegas, Henderson Executive, Perkinsfield and Overton, two airports in Gene, and the Mesquite Airport. It has the scale and management expertise necessary in today's complicated world. The cash that such a sale would generate could go towards some of the truly necessary, not frivolous, capital improvement projects the city has been unable to fund. I would ask that my comments be included in the record of the meeting verbatim. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reagan, you'd add your hand up?
Hello, Matt Reagan. I don't want to do public math, but I've been a resident of Boulder City for probably almost over forty years. I'm currently chairman of the Airport Advisory Committee, and I've been on that position for a little over six months. So when I first got on it, or let me back up. I became interested in the Boulder City Airport, and actually returning is after raising a family. It was opportunity to move back, and that was, I started becoming more actively involved, and that was when Mike Minshaw was hired for Boulder City. He worked about twenty hours a week as a quasi-manager. He was the only employee of the airport, and that is, I think that was in, oh, I would say that was, I think it was about 2005 to 2010. Now, at that time, not one GA hangar has been built since then. So the GA airport was established, and it was there back when there was only one employee working twenty hours. So with that now, obviously, the expenses have gone substantially higher, and we now have four, four total employees. And I think unfortunately, some of this additional need for revenue is now attempting to be put on the backs of us GA guys who have been here at this airport for a substantial amount of time. Now, what I wanted to communicate is the importance of this airport, and I have an emotional and vested interest in this, is I soloed at the old airport, and I started a career that has done very well for me and my family. And my son soloed at this airport. He is now currently enrolled at Central Washington University, and he is aspiring to be an airline pilot. And I don't mean to bring this up in a broader picture of there is a substantial amount of young people that this airport provides and access to aviation. We are all aviation enthusiasts, similar to the horse corrals, the dog parks, I mean, and that's what makes up the wonder, the greatness of why we live here in Boulder City. It's just a piece of that puzzle. And so I think it's important to look at that as not behind the fence, but this is all part of what makes this such a nice place to live. When I got on the AAC meeting, the first thing that I kind of was introduced to is how arguments and how things are presented. And one of my frustrations of this whole thing is the constant, "Well, you can't say that. You can't bring this up in the AAC." And I hear that quite a bit, and I want to push back on that because I think it's imperative that we have an open share of ideas in what's absolutely important. Now, and the case I'd like to bring up is the fuel farm. The AAC back, I think it was mid-2018, it was brought before the AAC, and the AAC said, "No, we do not support the fuel farm." Now, despite that, they even wanted a recommendation to be presented to you. Now, Mayor McManus, I believe you're the only one that was there on the council at the time. When it was presented to the council, it was even asked, I believe, I can't identify it because I've looked at the minutes. It even was questioned, okay, what is the position of the AAC? And it was, in the minutes, it clearly states, and I wasn't, I can't identify exactly who it is because it's a little not clear, but I believe it was our city attorney, Moore, said, "Oh, nobody said anything." I think one person said negative, and it almost implies that it was from this, from this audience. It wasn't directly from the AAC. The point is, is the AAC was against it. They thought it was a bad idea, and now we're stuck with this fuel farm, the city, and it's now our liability here at the airport. I'm not here to throw any stones, but what I have a problem with is how these arguments are framed. When staff comes in here, they're framing the argument that these are kind of this narrow window that which you all are presented, this information, and you're not really presented, or underrepresented, the people who actually live here, who want to have a long-term investment in this city. And I think that we, I certainly have to say that under this current makeup of the city council, I think we're there. We're moving in the right direction as far as where citizens are truly looked at and our concerns are, and first and foremost. Now, as far as to go forward, is I don't think there's a person in this room who does not want to pay, you know, that wants to see the success of this airport, and that means to pay fair market value. Now, if you look at some of the numbers that were floated, the commercial rates, I think the highest one currently is like a dollar sixteen a foot. Now, with the numbers that have been floated, is they're saying, "Well, you need to pay, you know, two-twenty to two-forty a foot," which is twice the amount of the current commercial rate, which clearly we can't obviously even operate our hangars commercially. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I ran up my time, but thank you much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Fonstock?
My name is Bob Fonestock. I am a part-owner in Boulder City Airport Properties and BFE. I managed the fuel farm for thirteen years prior to the city taking it over, and when we were going through the process to see what was going to happen with the contract that the city was putting out for the, for the fuel provider, I was shocked that there was no one from the city that had inquired as to what the costs were to manage the fuel After thirteen years of managing it, I came to realize that the way the airport, city fuel farm, came into existence was is that way back in the day, the airport got built, there was no fuel. There needed to be fuel here for the people that flew in and out. There just happened to be a guy who had a house in town, Wayne Yulberg. He flew his aircraft in and out of here. He also owned Air Petro. And the reason the city has a fuel farm is because he decided that he would put the fuel farm in, and his company, Air Petro, managed the fuel farm up until Jennifer's debacle. Air Petro changed to Hemeter, changed to World Fuels throughout the years, but they provided an incredible service to the airport. They actually built the fuel farm, and what that meant was, was back in the day, they had no money to build it, so Wayne went around to all his different locations and scrounged together a bunch of old parts and pieces, and that's our city fuel farm, not the above ground that was built later, but the below ground. And the city currently has the responsibility for maintaining that. And the issue there is, is it's going to cost a fortune to fix it up or become a super fun site once the, you know, the tanks are removed. Before the city changed vendors, World Fuels was paying for all the upkeep. If you look back how much the city spent on the fuel farm, it was paid for by World Fuels. World Fuels had $75 million of insurance. I'm not sure how much money the city has in insurance, but my concern there is, is that after the city had the fuel farm for a year, I went back and asked airport management, said, "Hey, can you give me a copy of all your quality control auditing for the last year, which is daily, monthly, quarterly, yearly inspections?" Took about thirty days, and I got the copy, and was kind of concerned when I went through it, because I get the same fuel and put it in my aircraft and also sell it. The concerns I had have to do with the quality of the fuel, and the fact is, I really don't want to buy the fuel because of that. But rather than just me throwing up red flags, I sent the same paperwork off to an independent auditor. This auditor is well-versed in, in fueling, and they came back and confirmed the same concerns that I had. I have then since pushed those concerns up the ladder, but I only really feel comfortable using the fuel because it goes into my trucks, and I sump the fuel and manage it properly before I distribute it. But if you're fueling up to the fuel farm and fueling your own aircraft currently, you don't have that luxury. So the quality of fuel that you get from the fuel farm, in my humble opinion, is not safer, meets the standard of fuel that should be sold. And I have the audits. If you guys would like to look at it, it should be utilized. The fuel farm should be evaluated immediately, and some sort of decision should be made if we're going to continue to maintain it the way we are. We are paying more money now for fuel. We pay six more cents per gallon since the city took it over. There's two underground tanks, one's jet, one's abgas. The jet hasn't worked, I don't know, for a year. I guess there's no plans to get it working, so we're paying more money. We have less service. I get all my fuel from the city, and they've recently given me their holiday schedule. These are days that there'll be no one there to provide me with fuel if I need it. It's probably ten days of the year, or if something breaks, there's no one there. There's also no one there to sump the fuel, or manage it, or maintain it, or take care of it. It's a very, very scary situation, and it should be dealt with, and there's a bunch of things to go into, but my time's up, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? See a hand in the back there?
Yeah, Rob Martin, Boulder City resident. I do own six of the old hangars. As all of you know, those are the first ones up. We've been told that's going to be the template for what's going to happen with the rest of the airport. So if they take all of the hangars that we've got, they'll take all the hangars at the airport. That's currently the plan of staff and has been for years, no matter what they've told you, because they've told me that directly several times. So that's something that you do need to think about. I don't know how many of you had a chance to read the memo that I shot to you Tuesday, which goes through the history of the airport and what's been going on, and that would be something to think about. I'd be happy to meet with you. If anybody wants any details, we have tons and tons and tons of detail on this, unfortunately, and on this unfortunate situation, because Boulder City is a great place. I love being here. I love GA. I fly in and out of here probably more than just about anybody else, and, you know, it's great. But at the same time, you know, if the GA airport goes away, it's really going to hurt Boulder City in all kinds of ways. Now, one of the things my memo points out is all of the expenses really relate to the helicopter operations and all of the tour stuff. Well, the problem is, is in about fifteen to twenty years, that's all going to be gone. So what happens then if the airport's totally eviscerated, which is what's going to happen if the GA is gone? And the GA will be gone if you take the hangars. I mean, I'm certainly not going to rent my own hangar back from the city after June. I will be removing doors. I will be removing some other stuff. They will essentially be valueless. You won't be getting the ground revenue. You won't be getting any hangar revenue, and to fix them up will be millions and millions and millions of dollars, and it makes absolutely no sense. What really does need to happen is there needs to be a new contract for a lease, and I urge each of you to read my memo, because it's very clear on what's happening, what's been happening, and what's going to happen. And, you know, the world's changing really fast in all kinds of ways, like there's an outfit out of Slovenia right now that's testing an air taxi that'll go 200 miles an hour. It'll go 200 miles. If that thing becomes a reality, all the helicopters are gone. You know, and it's an outfit called Pippa Strill. I actually went over to Slovenia and looked at it a couple of years ago, and it's really wild what's going to be happening in the next few years. And is this today? No. Is it tomorrow? No. But the future is going to happen, whether we want it to or not, and that's just something we all have to think about. And GA is a very, very important component to Boulder City, just as Matt pointed out. He started here. There's lots of other kids that have started here. I hope Joel stands up, who's got a flight school, and he's helped kids, you know, get, become pilots, start a career. You know, there's all kinds of wonderful things that happen when you have a small GA airport that is good. Like, you know, I spent all kinds of time with Kurt Castagna, who was hired as a special consultant to get all this stuff done, and he told me, "No problem. All this is going to happen. You know, you guys are going to have to have a big increase." And I said, "Fine, you know, whatever's fair." You know, we just look at that, and I guarantee you, and I've talked to probably everybody out at the airport, we all want to pay our fair share, and that's more than we're paying now because it's a thirty-year-old lease, and we know that. And one of the things my memo points out is, is when I had the discussions with Kurt, he said, you know, "Probably a double is about what we're looking at versus your current ground rate." And then I've heard numbers as high as eight times, which is, there's literally no GA airport in the country that charges that much. And, you know, it could be, I think there's one in Philly that's right downtown that is almost that high. I mean, I even called the guys at Van Nuys, which is the busiest private airport in the country. They don't charge that much. I mean, this stuff is kind of crazy. I mean, Kurt did a survey for you, it's in some of the reports, and he said, you know, "It could be anywhere from actually a little less than it is to as much as two, or three, or four, or five times." Now, yes, are there ones that are six or eight times higher, but they're typically right smack dab in the middle of a metro area. We're a suburb of Vegas, and frankly, I, the gentleman who knows so much about accounting, I was very impressed by, but I really strongly suggest that you don't sell to Clark County Aviation, because this is a great asset for Boulder City, and to lose that to Clark County Aviation, I, trust me, I used to rent out at Henderson, and I loved it out here when it first started, and since then, I kind of go scratching my head and saying, "Where are we going with this?" Because we want to be collegial. We want to work together. We want to get this done, and staff is making it essentially impossible, and that's why I very much appreciate what you've all done here and taking the time to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, Mike Caruso, Boulder City resident. I'll be super brief. I soloed here back in 2004, earned my certificate in 2005, which opened my eyes to Boulder City. Recently brought my family and our business out here to Boulder City. I'm probably the most recent hangar owner, as I just bought into this in August, and I got a new no, so I may have a turnip. But anyhow, it's hugely important to give us the opportunity to keep this on. I bought this with the sole purpose to be able to fly to accounts that I have in Prescott, Arizona, and for my son to have the opportunity to fly as well. This community is unlike anything anywhere near here, and it's absolutely amazing, and this airport is an absolute asset and a huge value to this community. And from what I understand, it's raised a lot of patriots with all the opportunities that we have to us. But the confusing thing to me is, is all of us want to continue this, and there is a middle ground somewhere where it would make sense for both parties, and I just wish there was a little more open speaking to get that handled. I really think that it just needs to be, you know, all tempers aside, all attitudes aside, let's crunch the numbers and make it make sense, and that's all. I thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment then. I do want to make clear that, you know, normally, we're up here for council meetings where on various items, we're going to be making decisions. Today's meeting is a workshop, so we're not making any decisions at this point. There won't be any direction to staff. We're here to get information, not only from the public, but from staff, and so my understanding is that Willie has a presentation that he will be making, and that's item number one regarding finances. So again, if you'd like to start with that. Mayor, City Council, thanks for having us. I'm going to try to figure out. There we go. Okay, so I'll be turning around. So this is in three parts. Airport economics, the real brief overview of the fuel farm, and then the hangars. So here we go. So the airport is a self-sustaining enterprise fund. We are self-sustaining and will continue to be that way if we don't have any projects going on or anything like that. It's when we start getting into maintenance projects that we start getting concerned. The airport is about thirty years old, and now's when you start seeing additional maintenance stuff start to occur. Mr. Williamson, let me ask one thing. When you say self-sustaining right now, then the revenues and the expenses are roughly equal? Yes, sir. We're slightly cash positive. Okay. And what amount of reserves are available in the airport fund? Right now, we have $250,000 in one reserve account and $180,000 in operational reserves, and I believe there's a little bit extra fluid money in there, but I don't know the exact number on that yet. I'm working with finance to determine that. Okay. Thank you. So over the course of the next ten years, you know, there's probably about $20 million worth of projects. About, the one that's, we're going to come up with next is putting a control tower in at the airport. in at the airport, and that's going to be $5 to $6 million. That's a project that is FAA-funded. And this is just an example. It's FAA-funded 90%, and we pay the other 10% of that. Hopefully, we get some money from the state. And then we end up having to provide maintenance to the structure. We don't pay for the controllers or anything like that. So we have to add that into our future budgets.
And again, I don't know that that has actually been approved. I know it's certainly been discussed. I know that the FAA has been inquired whether we qualify for it, but I'm not sure that that project's, it's not my recollection that that has been approved.
That is correct, sir. It is not, it has not been approved. It is in our FAA capital improvement plan, and we're adjusting the location of a variety of things in the capital improvement plan at this point. In fact, we have a meeting with an FAA rep next week, no, two weeks, to discuss the control tower and how that goes forward. And naturally, all of this, whenever we get our stuff together, it'll be presented to the city council and whatnot.
All right. Thank you.
So then there's other projects that we're looking at that are not eligible for FAA grants. Anything that's not an aeronautical project out there, meaning the parking lots, anything like that, any of that maintenance comes out of, out of the airport's own fund, 100%. So that's something that we're looking at and projecting out. I'm getting more and more information, and so that's going to adjust a little bit here and there. And, but it's looking at like about $1.8 million worth over the next 10 years. Let's see. I'm behind on this thing. Okay. So this is, this is our, our airport incomes and projection for 2021. It's a projection. The numbers are good. We based that on, on historic values and then also anticipated funding sources that are going to come around. You know, the CIP increases, not CIP, what is it? The CPI. Cola. Increases on, on the commercial rents and that type of thing. And some fee adjustments. For instance, what we're presently calling a landing fee. That'll be adjusted. So these numbers, I believe, are reasonably accurate. The airport expenses, I hate to say it, but I, I'm new with, with Munis, so there is an error in this page. Personnel costs are a bit more expensive, and the allotment to reserve is a bit less. And that's strictly because I made an error.
Can you estimate the amount of the error?
$508,000 on the top line personnel and $48,000 on the allotment to reserves.
Okay.
FAA grant-funded capital maintenance improvements. It's just a general one. The FAA funds with non-primary entitlements and grants are allocated to, let me reread this. FAA funding for the non-primary entitlement money, which we receive, and also grants, are allocated from the Aviation Trust Fund. The Aviation Trust Fund money is, is gathered from aviation fuel taxes and aviation user fees. So it's simply a case where if you're not flying, you're not contributing to the Aviation Trust Fund. So that, that's where the money comes from. It's not a, it's not like it's coming out of income tax at the federal level or anything like that. So allocations of, so FAA non-primary entitlements allocated to airports for improvements, aeronautical infrastructure, that's pavement, lighting on the runway, rotating beacons, that type of thing. And entitlements start at $150,000. That's for a standard general aviation airport that has no commercial operations at all. The NPE amounts increase whenever there is a commercial activity, and it's a formula that the FAA uses, combines operations and the number of commercial or paying enplanements, people flying. And our present NPE allocation for this airport is $1.8 million. Process is that the airport identifies a project. For instance, we have to replace taxiway lights. The FAA approves and allows a grant funding for 90% of the cost. And then we have to come up with the other 10%. The airport funds the project initially, and about every three months, it's supposed to be quarterly, we get a grant funding from the FAA. So we, we upfront the project, we send the bill to the FAA, and then they reimburse us. So that's the general process, and it works pretty good. So fuel, fuel storage. I'm just going to go over this pretty briefly. Mr. Fonsak mentioned some history and whatnot. But anyway, we presently have two 20,000-gallon above-ground fuel tanks for Jet A. We have one 12,000-gallon underground tank for Jet A and one 12,000-gallon underground tank for ABGAS.
I believe Mr. Fonsak had mentioned that there is no Jet A on, on the airfield available?
No, sir. There, the self-serve pump, which is the underground, so the two above-ground fuel tanks, those are tanks that people go up to with a refueling truck. They gather fuel from the big tank, then they take the fueling truck to the helicopters and aircraft and stuff like that to, to fill the aircraft. The underground tank is where you pull up to the fuel pump in your aircraft and you fill it, you know, similar to what you would do with a car. So we have Jet A that's available to everybody from BFE and also the, the other FBO, BCAST, to anybody that, that needs it.
Okay, but the fuel farm is not available to provide Jet A to individual aircraft?
That is correct.
And do we know why that is?
$10,000 and the fact that historically about 50 gallons a month was pumped out of that.
Okay, so very low usage?
Very low usage.
And the 10,000 is?
Parts. There are several parts that are required to bring that up to, up to snuff, to make it work. Then there's also a tie-in to the electronic card reader that would have to be done. And the bill on it's about $10,000. And looking at it and looking at, you know, how much fuel is actually being pumped and the fact that fuel is available from the other sources, the commercial sources on the airport, I decided that spending the $10,000 was, was not really worth it for the airport.
Do you get inquiries from pilots about having Jet A available for self-service?
I have not. I, I've had, I've had people discuss it with me, but nobody's said, "Hey, I need Jet A self-service."
Okay, thank you.
So the, the other one is the ABGAS. And ABGAS is available from both FBOs through their dispensing trucks. And then we do the self-service for, for the ABGAS. And we do pump some, some fuel through there, probably about 100 gallons a day is what we pump. Might be a little bit more than that. I'm, I'm not sure. I would have to really look through the historic numbers to determine what the average is. So. Am I on the right page? Okay. So we changed the contractor from World Fuel to Epic in August 2018. And Epic delivers Jet A and 100 low-led ABGAS to the airport. We get a load of Jet A about every two days. About 11,000 gallons or so comes into the airport to give you an idea of how much we're, we're putting through the system.
And most of that goes to the tour operators? Or are there others that are using that as well?
Yes, sir, the, the tour operators. That's by far the largest user of the, the jet fuel. Papillon goes through about 2,000, 2,100 gallons a day. Serenity, I think 1,100. Grand Canyon, about 1,300.
And they get their, excuse me, they get their fuel from one of the two FBOs? Or do they have their own delivery system?
So Papillon and, and Grand Canyon have their own delivery system. They come and get fuel because they are an FBO themselves. And then BFE gets fuel from that system and then redistributes it to, and dispenses it to the other commercial operators, which would be Serenity Five Star and Skydive.
All right, thank you.
So Epic provides us employees of the airport training on the system and how to go about doing the inspections and that type of thing. They also oversee our fuel quality control and provide support to make sure that everything's up to snuff. And they too have a pretty substantial insurance backing, about $75 million. Fuel storage facility, the fuel is inspected by airport staff whenever it's delivered. And I could go through the, what we do if you wanted. I don't have the checklist with me, but basically, we inspect the fuel when it gets dropped into the, before it gets dropped into the tank. Then we do our control, quality controls daily. We take fuel out of each tank, you know, after the filter. The above-ground tanks, we can take it out of the bottom of the tank because they're above ground. We can't do that with the below-ground tank because we can't crawl in there. And we do everything in accordance with industry standards, including ATA. And we're reviewed and audited annually by Epic and, oh, I forget the name of the organization. Basically Environmental Protection Services. It's Department of Health here, right? Yeah. Sorry, I'm, I'm new to the matter. So they come through and do an annual inspection, make sure that everything's going correct. And then we also have monthly and semi-annual and annual inspections that we do on it. Epic oversees all of this stuff. They, they take a look at it and make sure that we're doing stuff, because they don't want to be dropping fuel into a place where, you know, it's not getting pumped out or it's going to be contaminated, because that puts them on the line, too.
Do they actually test the fuel?
Yes, they do.
So Epic tests the fuel out of the storage tanks at the airfield?
Yes.
They, they came out annually, I'm assuming they will. So last year they did, and we haven't gotten a call yet for an inspection, but they come out and they do the same inspection that we do every day. And, and they conduct that and, and perform some of the monthly inspections of testing for, for any contaminants in the fuel.
Okay. And where does Epic get its fuel from?
They, they, they take the fuel from McCarran Field, where they, they have a large facility where World Fuel gets their fuel and a variety of other companies.
So it's not Epic's facility? There, there's some other entity that owns that storage farm and they disperse fuel to various distributors?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that fuel also would then go into commercial airliners potentially if it's Jet A and?
It's exactly the same fuel, out of the same facility.
So it's not like, you know, I go to a Shell station or I can go to an Arco station? Everybody's essentially getting it from the same fuel farm?
Yes, sir. In this area, they're, they're pretty much getting it from McCarran Field.
Okay. Thank you.
So fuel sales and storage, and the process is, reiteration, Epic holds the fuel inventory in our tanks. We, we start, we charge Epic a storage fee to store their wholesale fuel in our fuel tanks. Then they sell wholesale, you know, with our, our six cent per gallon fee for using our facility. Then they sell that directly to the FBOs, who then have the option of using it in their own aircraft or reselling it at a retail rate. We do collect a fuel flowage fee. Whenever they dispense fuel, it's three cents a gallon for dispensing into their own aircraft, and it's 10 cents a gallon if they dispense it into a transient airplane or even, I believe, all these guys end up having to pay the fuel flowage fee, too. And that's all pretty standard across the board with airports. And then what we do is we, we sell retail at the fuels, at the self-service pump, and that's the only retail we do, as, as the airport.
So that $10,000 repair you were talking about for the Jet A, you might be looking at revenue generated from the ABGAS self-serve to pay for that repair in the future if it were determined to be necessary?
That is correct.
I mean, the money's got to come from somewhere, is what I'm getting at.
Right. And, and if you divide it off the, the fuel system separately from the rest of the airport, that's, that's where it would come from. We don't make a whole lot of money on, on ABGAS. We just don't pump enough of it to really make much. It's more of making sure it stays open and it's available.
Do you have any estimate on how many gallons a month or a day or?
About 50,000 gallons a year.
A year? Okay. Thank you.
So in May 2019, we installed a new card reader. And more recently, in December, we installed a, a cellphone transmitter so that, because when this was installed, it was using a Wi-Fi system to hook up to the internet to do all the billing and all that kind of stuff and charge your credit card and that type of thing. There were concerns with the Wi-Fi system not working all the time, so we got the cellular unit to, and installed it in here so there would be a direct dial-up whenever you use it. And that was installed in, in December of 2019. And in addition to that, we've been going through the antiquated dispensers and doing repairs as we can. They are old, and really, the dispensers need to be replaced regardless of whatever else happens. So we'll be looking at that in the future as well.
What would you say the, your availability time is for the ABGAS self- What would you say the, your availability time is for the avgas self-service? You know, again, I've heard folks say that it's down all the time. It doesn't work. They're unable to get gas. Transient pilots that were planning on a fuel stop get stuck at the airport because the system's not working.
The, the airport is staffed from 6:30 to, in the morning to 6 o'clock in the evening on Monday through Saturday. Sundays, we don't have an active staff member there. So then there's also the phone number that's, that's written out there that you can call and it's going to dial up one of the four of us, you know, that's on watch. So there's somebody that, that's available. It might take an hour to get there or something like that, but there's someone available. And then the alternative, if you really need fuel is there's also BCASTs and, and BFE that make fuel available. And as far as I understand, they're both still available 24 hours on call.
Okay. But with the airfield self-service, what, what is the downtime? So if somebody comes, let's say at 8 o'clock at night, are they able to pump fuel?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's, it's available 24 hours a day.
All right. Again, do you have any figures on how often the system is down?
No, we, we actually did some research on this and calling the company that, that has the card reader. I don't know. I guess I, I lost my thing there.
They, they want to show us, Willie, right now?
No, okay.
We're, we're on camera.
Okay. So, so the, the new card reader, we've called that company and asked for that data. And the only thing they can show us is timeouts, which is where somebody swipes their card, it connects through, and then they don't start fueling within three minutes. And then it logs out. I also asked if we could find it through the VITA root system, which, you know, measures our levels of fuel. And the only time the VITA root system will read anything is if there's actually fuel pumped. It won't read a failed attempt. Since I've been here, I've had two people mention to me, it may have mentioned to somebody else, but two people have mentioned to me that they had a problem with, with getting fuel. One of that, one of those people, when I talked to him, that led to us getting the cellular hookup system on the card reader. And then the other one, the other person was just having a, a problem with the card reader and not sliding his card right or something like that. Anyway, that was taken care of. That was during business hours and Corey went out and helped him out with it.
Do you have any estimate on how many calls you had, the after-hours calls to your staff?
Hardly any. I, I can't think of any in the last, one a month. Marissa knows better than I do.
Okay. So, all right. Thank you.
So maintenance costs, there's a variety of problems that, that we found, that was found with the system when it was taken over by the city. And I, I'm not sure exactly what all they were. There's a lot of updates and whatnot. And so the, about $70,000 was spent last year, last fiscal year, bringing everything back into compliance or at least compliance to what Epic wanted to see done. And we're presently working on a couple of other issues with environmental protection systems. We don't have any problems fortunately, but we do have a system that has failed and that's getting replaced next Wednesday. I believe it's next Wednesday, right? And so I think the maintenance is going to go down after we get everything fixed up and, and upgrades to the fuel system. As, as you've no doubt heard earlier today, the underground fuel tanks are older. They're fiberglass and they're, they're kind of at the, the end of their expected life. We've had them inspected. We don't have any problems with them presently, but it doesn't mean that we don't look at fixing the problem before we have a problem. And that requires taking the avgas tank and putting it above ground. It's about a $600,000 project and we're looking at a variety of ways to do that with as little a cost to the airport as possible. And, yeah. So there are several possibilities there. It might end up being a request for proposal going out. Likewise with identifying fuel, fuel system management for the future, whether we want to end up keeping the airport as managing the fuel system or whether we want that to go contracted out again or whatever. But that's stuff we're looking at right now. And, you know, the big thing is we're, we're looking at cost and, and personnel. And so we'll be looking to see where that goes.
Just to clarify, over here, that, those costs for, for that, for getting the new storage, bringing the avgas up and everything, those would have to be assumed by the city regardless of whether or not we were still maintaining control of fuel storage and all that sort of stuff or if it was the, under somebody else's purview? That would be our responsibility regardless?
That would be our responsibility. There are ways to, to channel funding. For instance, through a different fuel company might support that for an extended contract or something, you know, to get their payback. There are a variety of options that we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question, Willie. Could you tell us how much profit we've made, the city has made on the fuel farms? Is it a profitable expenditure?
I don't have a real number for you. I would estimate in the vicinity of $10,000 positive.
Per year?
But that's for the avgas only. As far as the, the fuel storage fee, about 109,000. Last fiscal year.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just clarify a statement that was made by Mayor Protem. Just want to make sure that the question was asked, you know, whether the city would pay for that. I want to make sure that, you know, obviously this is an enterprise fund and we would try to put that burden on the enterprise to the greatest extent possible.
Yeah, correct. I, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that, I understood that whether, where the, where the responsibility lied on who was operating that, so.
Thank you.
So airport leases and contracts. Airport land leases. Let me get over to that page. So airport land leases are very common processes done throughout the United States with airports and also with other commercial activities and private activities. So there's nothing new about land leases. And what land leases are with an airport is typically, it's a joint opportunity for both the airport and a developer to build hangars. And then the, the developer will, who then owns the hangars on a land lease, rents the hangars out. And after a period of about 20 to 30 years, they've gotten a decent return on their investment. And then the, the standard language is a reversion to airport ownership, at which time the airport takes over the hangars, rents them out and makes money to put back into the airport's fund for maintenance and improvements. There are a variety of other types of, of lease agreements out there. There are some that have a termination that says you have to remove your hangar. There's some that have a clause in there that says you can continue on with your land lease. So there's a variety of different languages out there. What we have here is, let's see, make sure I'm on the right page. Don't want to get too far ahead of myself. So, anyway, here at Boulder City, we have 139 privately owned hangars that are on land lease. 127 of the hangars are permanent hangars. 12 of them are called porta ports, so they're designed to be a portable hangar. And they have a slightly different lease than the rest of them. All of them have a, a reversion clause in them of some sort. The 28 hangars we're presently talking about are on agreement 8985, which terminates in July 2020. And this is after 30 years, a 20-year initial lease and a 10-year extension. So it's 30 years total. All, all of the commercial hangars also have a reversionary clause. And so it's, everybody's got that. The other private land leases come, terminate in 2023, 2024, and 2028. And the commercials are 2039, 2041, 2052.
Do you know of those commercial leases, do you know which one is which? The 2039, the 2041, 2053?
I'd have to look at the map to tell you exactly which one's which, but we do have that information and I believe we can get that to you today.
Okay. But the soonest or the earliest retiring lease in that or expiring lease is 2041?
2039.
2039. All right.
Hi. The commercial ground leases, there's, for Monarch Enterprises, there's terminates in 2052. They have another one that terminates in 2039. And then they took over, oh, the one in 2039 they took over is, used to be a previous land lease for Stars and Stripes Enterprises. They have a new facility that expires in 2052. The BCAST lease, which Grand Canyon Airlines and BFE both operate from, they share the property. That one expires in 2041.
And again, Mr. City Attorney, I don't know if you know this, but if you've reviewed those contracts, are those contracts subject to renegotiation at the city's desire or?
Well, that's, that's an interesting question, Mayor. Two consenting parties can always.
Yeah, but I mean, are there specific provisions in there that we can go to the leasing and say, we're going to renegotiate this? Or would we need their consent to enter into any type of renegotiation?
Two consenting parties could come to that conclusion, but no language in the agreement that I'm aware of that would require that.
Okay. So the terms that are there are going to be there for a while.
Until the expiration of those leases.
All right.
Correct.
Thank you.
So that brings us to this one. All the hangars and all the land leases have a reversionary clause. So what does, you know, what does that mean? Well, if, if you go by the contract, the, the hangar and the land reverts to city ownership. At that point in time, the airport, with city council approval of course, determines what the lease rate or rent rate would be for the hangars. And there's several formulas that you can use and then there's just some plain old good headwork that can go into it as well. The rents are typically done on a month-to-month basis that, that's for a variety of reasons. It gives a lot of latitude to, to the tenants mainly, if they want to stick around, leave, The, the other, there's, there's actually several options. The city can determine to, that it's better to rent the hangars out as a triple net, which means that the tenant would take care of all the maintenance and utilities and all of the associated costs, but get a reduced rate on the actual rent. And there's, again, there's several formulas for figuring that out. Another option would be you could sell the hangars and do another land lease. And.
I'm sorry, when you say sell the hangars, what, what do you mean? Sell the land that there?
No, no, no. You can't sell the land. Well, I mean, you probably could. That would be a whole lot of red tape with the FAA. But you could, you know, resell the existing structure and then establish a new land lease under that structure, which is just kind of a skirt around just writing a new land lease. But it makes the paperwork flow from what I've been told. So the other option is, the question is, do you want to deviate from doing a reversion? You've got all these options with a reversion that you can do. And if you, if you determine that it's in the best interest of the city and the tenants to, to deviate from that clause, then you again have a variety of options. My, my first recommendation would be get with the city attorney and make sure, you know, all the legalese type of stuff is done correctly. And then you've, you've got an option of writing a new, you know, writing new land leases, extending a land lease or whatever, you know, there's, there's just a whole bunch of different options. And then you set the prices according to, to what's needed. So, you know, this is, this is one of those situations where you've got the contract and we know really quick and easy what the, the options are. If, if you follow the contract, you can do the reversions. If you deviate from that, then it gets a little bit different. But regardless, you know, we'll, we'll still make it work. I don't know if I'm making this real clear or just muddying up the facts. It's all clear in my head, but, but I, I just want to say that there are options. And, you know, a decision has to be made at some point. And.
Let me ask you this about the existing leases, at least the ones that are coming up for expiration this year. Is there any language in there that talks about contract extensions or automatic renewals or any terms like that?
The only, the only language in there about that is at the 20-year point. And then there's, at the 20-year point, the tenant was allowed to extend for an additional 10 years only. And we're at the end of that 10 years.
Okay. So there are no terms beyond what the expiration date is at this time within the contract?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm available for questions. That's all I had on my presentation, sir.
All right. Any questions? Councilwoman Fuldah? Okay. Councilwoman Bridges, any questions?
Well, I presented you with quite a bit of information and you answered all my questions. So thank you very much.
All right. That leaves with me. I guess I'll just start by saying in the research that I have, have done myself, I think the FAA makes it very clear that they do have an interest in making sure that public lands maintain their status as being public. in making sure that public lands maintain their status as being public for public use, that we're not subsidizing for private, for private uses essentially, that we are subsidizing at this cheap rate. How often does the FAA perform audits on airports?
Well, we get an audit every time we spend over $750,000. Then they're supposed to visit every airport within three years. And then there's also another inspection that's done by the state every three years. But that's an operational inspection.
And when was the last time that the FAA performed an audit at our airport?
I'm going to have to ask Marissa.
They came out in maybe 2010 or 2011 and did a compliance inspection and viewed all of our contracts and items like that.
And at that time, did they provide any concerns or any express direction regarding those contracts, our airport, how we were heading, things that we needed to be cautious about as we were approaching this time?
Ensuring that we were, we had aeronautical use on the airfield and as well as our contracts, making sure that they have all of the, they're not exclusive use agreements.
And then the FAA does have a limit with what they feel is appropriate for the amount of time that you can lease the land out, correct? That at a certain point, if you're leasing it beyond 30 years, you have essentially given much of that public use for private use. Is that correct?
Yes. So the FAA considers a return on investment at about approximately 30 years. I think it's 30 to 35 years is what they have. And then they also consider 50 years the absolute maximum for any piece of land to be on a land lease.
And then, like you said, you know, there are a number of different ways to approach this. In reviewing this, it seems that, you know, it's almost a different one for each city as to what fits best for their community. So obviously, hopefully, that is our intent, to do what is best for the community as a whole. You know, and Shreveport being the biggest one that obviously gets talked about a lot, you know, they had use, I think you said, to make sure that it's for aviation use. They noted in Shreveport, people were using them for dog kennels, for actual residencies. We don't have any issues like that going on at our, where it seems to be that most of the use is for aviation, right?
No dog kennels, no, sir.
What is the percentage of hangar owners that are Boulder City residents? Do you know that number?
I can't give you an exact number, but I believe it's about 50%.
And how does that compare to a lot of other airports our size?
Pretty, pretty constant, you know. That seems to be pretty accurate for smaller airports. I know at Pearson Field, we were up at 60%. And then Camas was probably 40%.
And then I guess I'll just make the comment that I think it's been very, made very clear to me, this is probably the issue, out of all my time on council, that I have received the most emails from. I have tried to do my best to respond to all of them. I'm sure I have missed some of them. But in every single one, everybody says that they understand the need to, that things are going to cost a little bit more, that they are willing to pay a fair, a fair rate. Obviously, that's, you know, that's where it's all at, is what is considered fair and what is not. But I think it is very clear that there is real interest in maintaining a healthy relationship with the city. They understand the need. So I really hope that we, as a council, can come to a conclusion that every, well, maybe not everybody is happy with, but that the majority of understand that this is to benefit the future of our thing while also supporting our general aviation community.
I agree.
All right. Thank you. Willie, what is the above-ground, sorry, as far as fuel storage? The above-ground tanks versus the underground? Is there a requirement for them to be moved to above-ground? Or is that just a best use so that you have better access? Or is that, you know, what's the difference between having them buried versus above?
Having them buried, you have a lot more environmental concerns. And with fiberglass tank, there is concern of deterioration over years. And one of the big concerns is, is if you do have a perforation in your tank, you don't know about it until the damage has already occurred. And environmental damage is extremely costly.
If, in the future, we're looking at taking out those underground and replacing with above-ground tanks, is there an incentive or a benefit from having a much, much larger storage capacity? Would that break down any cost as far as, is there a cost for, you know, a truckload, per truckload? Or, you know, if there's less, you know, transfer going on? If it's just a larger tank, storage capacity, would that be a benefit?
You're better off if you're able to accept a full truckload of fuel. Otherwise, they start charging you more money for transportation. So yeah, you want a large tank. About 12,000 gallons is sufficient for an ab gas tank. That means that you, at this airport anyway, you'll have enough fuel to service your needs and still schedule a full tanker truck to come in and fill the tank.
Can you tell me about how much a tanker truck carries?
10,000 gallons.
10,000, okay. Would there be a benefit to having a much larger tank, like double that size or even larger?
I don't think so. Ab gas, we don't, we don't get fuel that often. So it's what, every three months? Yeah.
You get three months, or, okay. But is there any kind of a risk of it sitting too long? Is there, you know, is there a risk for, as far as quality? If it's a larger tank and it's not getting moved as much?
Yes, there is. All fuels have a shelf life. Gasoline that you get for your car usually has about a three-month shelf life. Ab gas used to have a two-year shelf life, and I believe they've dropped that to a one-year. And I'm not sure why, but-
Okay. Give it.
I do have a question. You talked about one of the options for the fuel farm. At some point, might be transferring ownership or management of it to a different company. If you bring in somebody else to manage that, do they pay a fee? Do they pay a usage? Do, how does that work out? Because you said that only so much money, the airport only makes so much money running its own fuel farm and the maintenance and all of that versus what the fee would be that would be paid back to us?
Yes.
From an outside company?
So that really comes into how you negotiate the contract. There's a variety of ways you could, you could fee that out. Storage fees, flowage fees, just general percentage profit. So it's, it's like any other type of a business situation. You go in and you say, I need X amount of dollars. And you say, how are we going to work this out? And you figure out how the fees are going to best work for both entities. You know, because they might have some deal where, you know, if they get a fuel flowage, if they pay you a fuel flowage fees, they get rebated somewhere. You know, it really gets across the board there. And then, you know, right now, we're charging them basically rent on the fuel tanks, you know, the storage fee. And, you know, we could, we could put a surcharge on that if we wanted to and something like that, too. All of that cost, in turn, gets transferred over to the user, no matter how you look at it. It's just a matter of how you cycle it to pay for what needs to be paid for. And, you know, personally, I'm just going to say it. That's something that, that we really need to look at. Because, you know, we want to pay the bills, but we certainly don't want to be gouging people. If you have too high a price on gas, you don't get the tourist trade that comes in, you know.
Sure. Typically, do general aviation airports run their own fuel farms? Or is this something that's typically using the term farmed out?
It really depends. I would say probably a smaller portion of the sponsors, the airport sponsors, run the fuel farm. And it's really because that's not, not what we're typically in business to do. There are some cases where nobody else wants to do it. When I was running Toledo Airport, that was the problem there. Nobody wanted it, so the airport ran the fuel farm.
So it's not a super exciting thing that people are lining up and saying, we'd really like to run your fuel farm?
No. You know, if you, in our case here, if I was wholesaling the, if I was buying the fuel from Epic, including the jet fuel, and then reselling it, you know, then, then yeah, it would make sense financially because there'd be enough profit in it. Would I want to do that? No, only, only because I would want the income to help support the airport. You know, it's one of those deals where it's, you have, you have commercial activity, and that's typically what does that. And, you know, it's not government's role to, as I see it, to be in a commercial activity. And so that's, that's one of those, one of those things there.
One question, one last question. All right. One extra question. From my background, it's, when you have businesses or operations, you look at a mission statement, and you said that the fuel is not the business that we're in. If you look at the airport as a whole, what is the business that it is in?
The business that we're in?
Yes.
Well, I don't know if we've got a mission statement, but I would tell you that the business we're in is supporting and supporting all aviation, making a safe airport, a safe hub of transportation for the public, the flying public and the general public.
Thank you.
To follow up a little bit on the fuel operations. Currently, the company that delivers the fuel is Epic Fuel, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did, do they show any interest in operating the fuel farm? Or are they only interested in delivering the fuel?
They're interested in delivering the fuel, but I'll let, I'll let Marissa chime in here if I'm off on that.
No, they haven't expressed interest in doing the onsite management at this time.
Well, I don't mean outside management. I mean actually doing the maintenance, doing everything that airport employees are currently doing if they've shown an interest in taking that over.
That's not how the contract was written?
I'm not talking about that. I'm just saying what, what type of services they're able to provide.
Epic does not typically provide those services. I've dealt with them at three other airports, and they have never expressed any interest in, in doing the, the actual onsite maintenance and management.
And the prior company was World Fuels, as I recall?
World Fuels and BFE.
Okay. So one of the existing FBOs was doing the operation of the fuel farm?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So World Fuels had the contract to provide fuel to the fuel farm and oversee the maintenance of it. And they subcontracted that workout to a company, and that just happened to be BFE.
Okay. So neither one of the suppliers appears to show a great interest in operating the fuel farm?
That is correct.
Do you know of companies that do that aside from the existing FBOs? Here in Southern Nevada?
Here in Southern Nevada, I don't know. I know of one company in Southern California that that is what they do. They, they handle several airports. I don't know if they'd be interested in coming here or not.
And Clark County Aviation runs all the other airports in Southern Nevada?
They, they run-
Maybe not search-like, but-
I think they run five airports in the greater Las Vegas area.
And somebody had mentioned earlier, they also do Mesquite and Overton and-
Yeah, they do Mesquite, and I don't know about Overton.
And any idea how they handle their fueling operations?
No.
They, they manage, Clark County is their own FBO at the airports. They choose to be that. And they also provide fuel and oversee their fuel farms.
Okay, through the county aviation department?
Yes, it's the county employees.
Okay, so they have contracted out for those services? Okay, thank you. On the leases, currently on the ones that are coming up for expiration, approximately how many square feet are those hangars each?
Each hangar, if you averaged them, it would be about 1,571 square feet.
Okay. And what is the current lease rate for each of those hangars that the city receives?
We receive 44 cents per square foot per year.
And care to help me with the math, or shall I do it? I do have a computer here, so I can do it.
$19,000.
Okay. Per hangar?
No, for all of them, for the 28.
So we've got 19 divided by 28?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so per year, each one is paying about $680?
Yes, sir. Average.
Or about $56 a month?
Yes, sir.
For 1,500 square feet, almost 1,600 square feet of storage?
Yes, sir. Aircraft storage.
Aviation purposes, I believe is the term. You know, looking at that, $56 a month, I know I've got a couple of storage units that are far smaller than 1,600 square feet and are far more expensive than $56 a month. The reading that I've done regarding reversion was, the purpose of entering into those types of arrangements was, someone else would put up the initial money for building the hangar. The airfield provides the land, the space, the ability to have a hangar. And then someone else would pay the money to build the hangar, and then a lease would go into effect that would say, we're going to give you a very low rate on your lease, over the term of this lease, in exchange for the value of that hangar. Is that a proper explanation of what reversion is all about?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the, the business model.
So the agreement is that you'll have 20, or in this case, these leases, 30 years of very low rates, which will offset the cost of that structure. In exchange for that, the city has said, the value we're giving up each month will then be returned in the form of that hangar at the end of the lease?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you already confirmed earlier for me that in these particular contracts, the language that was present in the contract, as far as an extension, that was activated 10 years ago. There is no other clause in there that would talk about an automatic extension or anything of that nature. Is there anything in that contract that says that the leasing can diminish the value of the hangar prior to the end of the lease?
No.
Okay. Right now, we're not in public comment. We do have a public comment period coming up. So again, the language in the lease, Mr. City Attorney, if you'd like to speak to this as well?
I would incur with what Willie has said. Obviously, there's differences of opinion in that regard. And you'll likely hear some of those differences during public comment. But again, all contracts can be interpreted differently. But the intent of these contracts was, just as you said, Mayor, that- that the bargain that was... Or the benefit, rather, that was bargained for at the time these leases were entered into was that that asset would become the city's at the termination of that lease.
Okay, thank you. And with the long-term commercial leases or longer term, those also have reversion clauses in them, is that correct, all of them? So all of the...
Yes.
All of the FBOs, then, the Terminal Building, which is an FBO, right? I mean, we call it the Terminal Building, but it is an FBO?
That's Papillon, and Papillon is part of Monarch and BCAST, so in effect, yes.
Okay. So when those contracts come up for expiration, those buildings revert to the city by the terms of the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know that Councilman Adams has brought it up earlier. Some of the reading I did also indicates that we could jeopardize the funding from the FAA if public money is going for private use. And that seems to be one of the reasons that these reversion clauses are used so frequently. Certainly, all of the operations at our airport seem to have that, that a private entity can come in, use the property for a period of time at an advantageous lease rate, but at the end of that lease rate, the value of that reverts back to the city.
Yes, the FAA is concerned about that, and it's addressed in the grant assurances in Order 5190.
And potentially, the FAA could actually require us to pay money back if they found that we had not been operating the airport in a manner that they designate as being fair?
Yes, that has happened on several occasions.
Okay. Going back to the finances, again, right now, there's a little over $100,000 surplus each year. Is that fair?
I would say that's pretty fair, yes, sir.
Okay. You know, a concern that I have is the past work that's been done out there, at least over the past couple of years that I'm familiar with. You know, there was work on taxiways, aprons. It's very expensive work. The last contract, I recall, the grant from the FAA was $7 million, in the neighborhood of $7 million. And the city apparently is responsible for 10% of that. Every cost that I've seen associated with the airport usually has several zeros involved because it's expensive. You know, you're doing paving, you're doing concrete work, things like that. When the city does things, you know, build a softball field or something like that, you know, if something were to happen to the field, the exposure there, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. It seems with the airport, everything's in the millions of dollars. So I would just like to make clear to the public that when we view these types of things, we're talking about a very expensive facility. And we can talk for a long time about it being an enterprise fund that is self-sufficient, but the fact is that with the large amounts of money that are involved, it's a significant exposure for the city. This is not something to be taken lightly, the operation of an airport. Flying itself carries its own risks with it, but certainly even ground operations and just the fact of the amount of land that's used, the amount of paving that's there, all of that makes it a very expensive operation that's been built up over a number of years, but the exposure is still there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you. I didn't finish, so...
Oh.
That's okay. Sorry, so I'm going to go back to the fuel farm for a second. It was said about $100,000 per year for the storage fees and $10,000 per year for the avgas. Is that revenue purely profit? Or is that, you know, that's just what we receive, and then we pay our contract or whatever else we need to pay out of that?
So the storage fee is pretty direct profit. Naturally, whenever we get the money from all these different fees, you know, landing fees, rents, all that stuff, it kind of gets piled into the aviation fund. And so there are costs that are... This thing's still whistling at me. There are costs associated with maintaining the fuel farm. And like I said, about $70,000 the last fiscal year. That price should go down some. So the storage fee, there is a little bit more income off of the fuel system than just the storage fee. We make about $10,000 markup on the avgas that we pump, and we also make, I forget how much, on fuel flowage fee. But it's not that significant, I don't think. So all in all, probably the income off the fuel system aggregate would be $180,000 maybe. And I could be way off on that.
Do you know the cost of the contract that we have with Epic for the transportation?
We don't pay transportation.
I don't?
The airport doesn't. They pay us to store the fuel there.
Okay. So there's no cost affiliated with that use?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so then, do you know how many... Now back to the leasing of the hangars. Do you know how many of the hangars are being subleased versus just private use?
I know of six hangars that are being subleased out of the Nuneo hangars. I do not know any more than that. There could be some. We can find that out, but I don't know off the top of my head.
City Attorney, do we know? Because we'd have some kind of contract signed with us, right, as well?
The airport manages those contracts and oversees those subleases, so we can get that information.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm hearing a lot of is stability within the use of the leases, that, you know, this is understandably, you know, something that's very scary because, you know, the airport, you know, there's different things being thrown at here. Sell the airport, sell the leases, you know, take over the leases. So stability is a big concern. So what if there were to be a reversion? How... What, and going month to month, is that the... Does the FAA give any guidance on after the reversion? You know, doing just month to month or doing a 10-year lease? Or, you know, do they have anything that they... I know before the reversion, they have a lot of input, but after that, do they have any guidance on that use?
They have a variety of things. ACRP, a different organization, provides some guidance on that. And, you know, just as a standard rule, hangar rents for private operations are typically month to month. Nobody does a private hangar for more than a year. Commercial hangars are typically rented out for five years, maybe five and five. But that's pretty standard. You know, as far as stability goes, you know, you can look at it like this. Look at it like owning a house. You own a house, you got stability, you know the house is there, you know what your own stuff is. You rent in a house, you've got a landlord you're dealing with. And that can be all over the place. And then the oddball one is renting from a government entity. So government entity is going to be a little bit more stable than just renting from somebody because we have checks and balances. You guys are going to be checking on me and making sure I'm not turning into some rogue. And then we also have typically the requirement to not gouge anybody and make everything a fair playing field. So, you know, I guess it's... It's never going to be as stable as owning your own place, but, you know, it's not as bad as it could be.
So the reversion clause in that model was used pretty heavily 30 years ago. A lot of airports are going through this at the same time, at least on the side of the country. Do they... Does the FAA still... FAA still use that model, or they moved away from that? So if there were to be more things built now today, would they continue to use that reversion model or use a different standard?
No, that's currently published information.
Okay. So if something were to add on, we could... That's still something that's used, then? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, they have a... So the FAA penalties, let's talk about that. If you were to continue to extend these uses, what's the penalty that the FAA could impose?
Well, what they can do is they can... They can just stop approving grants to us. So it is true. They can do that, and it's not necessarily because of any specific thing. If we continue to do stuff that is contrary to what they believe that our best path is, then they could, you know, do a full audit on us, and if they found something really egregious, then they could do like they did with Goodyear or what they did down in Shreveport or up in Washington. There's been several places where they've come back and said, "You got to pay us back or fix the problem." So, you know, those are the scare tactics. Does it happen? Well, it does. But it's not like every day if you slip out a joint a little bit, that they're going to come and just, you know, kill the airport. They're not in business to do that. They're in business to make airports go forward. So they can, but, you know, I guess you'd have to do something pretty bad before they actually took money back from you.
Okay, did... If we were to not have done the reversion clause, if we didn't build out using this model, if we built the hangars ourselves originally, is there a difference in what the funding they would have provided to us or not?
Yes, ma'am. So if you were to build a set of hangars, typically that's funded through a municipal bond or something like that. And then you rent the hangars out, you pay back the bond, and then after the bond's paid back, usually about 15 years, then you're collecting full profit. So you end up getting the hangars a little bit sooner than you would with a reversionary clause, and so you're making the money a little bit sooner. But there's the burden of having to get the municipal bond approved, get people that want to invest in the bond, and that type of thing.
Okay, but how does that factor into the money provided, grant money? I don't know if it's called grant money, but it's the NPE allocation?
That really doesn't have anything to do with the non-primary entitlements.
Okay.
If you take just a small airport in the middle of nowhere, that airport, if it's an IPUS, you know, National Plan of Integrated Airport System, it's an IPUS airport, it's going to get $150,000 allocated to it per year. You go build a bunch of hangars, you get more money. You're still going to get the $150,000. But there is also what's called an AIP grant, Airport Improvement Plan. And that's discretionary money, and it's a competitive grant system. So the smaller airports that are getting the $150,000 a year NPE money also get to compete for the AIP grant money and at the same rate as anybody else. You know, it's a 90-10 balance, so...
Okay, so if I understand that right, to get the AIP money, you have to participate in the other, the NPE?
Yeah, the FAA is going to use your NPE allocation first, and then they'll apply the AIP discretionary funds.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Lights up, there it is. Okay, two questions. I noticed over the years that owners have resold their hangars. So Person A is originally involved, and then 10 years ago sold the hangar to Person B. First of all, does the city benefit in that sale?
No.
No, okay, so the Person A has full... Gets full benefit of that money over that. And I'm assuming that, and the city is involved in that process, however, knows that there's this new person on the lease, but that person would be aware, fully aware that that was a... That the lease has a reversion clause? It's not just a private deal between the two?
That's not necessarily the case, no. The airport is aware of it. We approve, you know, the change in ownership. And, but as far as ensuring that they've got their private deal, they've been provided the information, that hasn't necessarily been the case. So... They're typically, you know, apprised of the fact that, well, there's a reversionary clause, but I don't think that they've been given a copy of the lease every time.
Okay, yeah, I was... Also, what does that transfer look like? I mean, if it's your property and I end up with a deed, I end up a deed of ownership, does the new owner end up with some kind of deed of ownership? Or is it still that odd thing that stops belonging to them on a given date?
I don't know which instrument is actually used. I haven't experienced that here.
Okay. Well, I know I've seen them for sale or know people who have bought them and just wondered what that document looks like.
In Oregon, it's a quitclaim deed.
It's a quitclaim?
Yeah.
Okay, and also, what approximately... I think we talked about this before. Approximately, what is that break even? Is there a break even point where the FAA might come and say, "Okay, you may not be taking possession of those and turning around and leasing them as the owner of the hangars" versus new leases where they continue on as-is but with new lease amount? Is there kind of a break even where they would say, "Oh, I can... We still see that you are making money at this airport"?
Well, I think that depends on the language in the contract, one for one. But I also think that at the 50-year mark, if you were to write somebody a contract that said, "Okay, you've got 50 years, and then you extend it beyond the 50 years." The 50 years is a big number with the FAA. And they don't like to see any land leases beyond 50 years, no matter what.
So if you have somebody who's had a 30, they don't want to see anybody with another, beyond another 20?
Not beyond another 20, no.
No, but in terms of today, if we... If the hangars with the reversion clauses, say, in this year, were to... Those numbers were to be revised and say, "Okay, you can do this again for 20 years", is there a break even amount between that and what the city would... If the city took over management of the hangars and rented the whole thing as a package?
You know, I would have to talk to who's running the airport's district office to get a feeling for that because I don't think there's anything in writing that says that.
Okay. Yeah.
There is something in writing that says 50 years.
Oh, okay.
And there is something in writing that says that they figure 30 to 35 years is ample time for payback on investment, or for a return on investment.
For a return on investment. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. City Attorney, do you know what the instrument is for the ownership on the buildings?
It would be more akin to a mobile home that is on land that's owned by someone else, because this is not title and land that you're transferring, because it's public land. And so, it would be a title transfer, but that's a private transaction between two private parties. The city, you know, again, wouldn't be involved in that, other than if there's going to be a sublease, or information is provided to the airport that, "Hey, there's a new person out here, and we need a new badge for this individual who, you know, now is going to be in this particular hangar." So, no, so what Willie was referring to, a quitclaim deed, that's titled a real property. It's not real property that's being transferred here. It's the vertical improvement, if you will, the hangar itself.
Do we, do we allow for or require that we be made aware of these subleases?
Okay. So for the, for a hangar owner to sublet the unit out, they have to provide notice to the city, and we've created a sublease approval form, so that they can easily provide us notification. That way, we get the information from the owner of the hangar and the renter, and then we have everybody sign that document, and basically saying that they're gonna abide by the rules or regulations, the lease information, or the lease documents, sorry. And so that's the sublease. If they sell a hangar, they transfer the lease to the new owner. And there is a process for that, that we've kinda packaged together over the years to get their information. We normally don't find out until they've completed the transaction. You know, we ask for a bill of sale or a quitclaim deed at that time, just to have some, just to see that they've actually transferred the unit over. And then we prepare a lease transfer document, and it's signed by both parties, and then we have that go through, go through the city. And then we provide, we retain one record and provide a record to the previous and current owner, then.
And how long has that process been in effect?
Since, before I've been here. So, I came here in 2009.
Okay. So, at least 10 years? All right? And with these subleases then, whatever the city had initially agreed to for the monthly rent or yearly rent, that's not any hindrance to the hangar owner to go to a sublease and say, you know, "I'm paying, in the case of the current ones, $56 a month, but I'm gonna charge you $500 a month."
Yeah, they could do that.
They do that, yes.
Couple other things that have come up regarding revenue. Passenger fees, I know that that was discussed at one time. My understanding is, the answer came back from the FAA, that a municipal airport such as ours is not allowed to charge a boarding fee or a per-passenger fee?
It has to do with the type of flight that's occurring. There has to be X amount of flights to begin with, you know, X number of passengers, and then the other part of it is, is they have to deplane at a different location. If they fly out somewhere, they hop on the airplane, you know, fly to somewhere, get off and have lunch, get back on the airplane and come back, that is not something that's eligible for a passenger fee.
Okay. Do you know of any of the tours that don't do that, that don't essentially just make round trips from our airport and back to our airport?
Actually, Grand Canyon Air does fly to Page, but they don't have enough flights to qualify for that.
Okay. And then, the other type of revenue that I've heard discussed, landing fees.
So, landing fees is a real slippery slope. Yeah, we could charge landing fees. We actually have a thing that's called landing fees right now, but what it really is, is a commercial service fee. And I'd like to rename it as a commercial service fee, because if, once you establish landing fees, even if you're not charging the general aviation guys, somebody's gonna hear the word "landing fee," and, you know, they're not gonna use the airport, they're not gonna come here, because they're gonna be scared they're gonna get charged 15 bucks just to land the airplane. I personally am, you know, other than something like McCarran or something like that, where you have real commercial activity, I strongly disagree with landing fees.
So, are there any revenue sources that are not currently used, that you believe are standard or at least common?
Well, our commercial service fees need, we need to look at all of the fees, for one thing, and commercial service fees are pretty light, so we're looking at bringing those up.
Is that possible to do within the current contracts?
Yes.
Okay.
And then there's other things we could do, fueling surcharge and stuff like that, that we have to look at. You know, the FAA, or not FAA, the ACRP's got a whole list of different fees that you can charge in an airport, and to be quite honest with you, I haven't got into that in the last couple of months, so.
Okay. We do charge, you know, you had mentioned pilots who are not here, if they are to land at the airport, and were going to be in town for a couple of days and needed a tie-down, there is a rental fee for that, right?
Yes. Yeah, we do charge an overnight fee, and I don't know what it is right off the top of my head. I think it's five, $5 a night to tie down. And, yeah, so, pretty decent.
Okay. Another concern that I've heard is the distance between some of the hangars, taxiways, alleyways, whatever you'd like to call them, I've been told, may not be wide enough or may not be to current FAA standards?
So, this is where it gets kinda weird, because they're not necessarily separated far enough for FAA standards for funding. They're, a taxi lane, if, you can build that to whatever category you want. You can build it 37 feet wide and get a 36-foot wing through there, that's fine. You're not gonna get any funding for repaving it now. Used to be, they didn't care about that, and then they started shrinking it down, shrinking it down, and now they're playing hardball on those areas. So, that's where the issue is. It's not, it's not a situation where we're not gonna be compliant with our B-2 reference code. It's just a matter of funding.
Okay. So, essentially, we would have to plan on, you know, the eventual resurfacing of those without being able to apply for FAA grant money?
That's part of the $1.8 million in the next 10 years.
But we're not in a situation where some row of hangars needs to be removed?
No.
It's still acceptable on a safety basis, the distance that they are, it's just the FAA would prefer it larger, and if you don't do it, they won't give you any money for it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Let me give a case in point here, sir. Kelso Airport has a runway that's 4,400 feet long, 60 feet wide. Because that runway is not 5,000 feet long, they're, the FAA is only going to pave the 40-foot wide strip down the middle of it. That's the kind of tricks they're pulling.
So, 10 feet on either side is the responsibility of whatever entity owns the airport?
Exactly. And, you know, I don't know what to say about it, alls I know is that that's the practices they're doing right now.
But if they were to extend their runway another 600 feet, then magically, the grant money becomes available?
Yes, sir, because it meets their cookie cutter.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. The reversion clause is not unique to Boulder City Airport, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. It's gonna be a very hard decision for us to make.
Yes ma'am.
I'm not happy about being on the council for that reason. But, because I've gotten an awful lot of emails, too. However, we will, I think, in having this today and seeing the amount of people that came, that's very good, and we will all consider everything and do what's best for the city.
Well, that was a nice way to end it, but I'm gonna ask just a couple more questions. As far as usage of the airport, how much of it is commercial use, how much of it is general aviation?
I would say, I think we're about 87% commercial use.
And the 1.8 million in maintenance and improvement that we're talking about, where is that money most, I mean, where is, who does that service most? Are we talking, is that just across the board for everybody it's going to improve, or are we looking at improvements needed for the commercial side, or for the general aviation side? How is this?
That's predominantly focused on the general aviation side. Around the hangars, the pavement areas, the transient tie-down, and that area. Fuel farm, if we, if we, you know, I think I put in there $250,000 for a cost share on the fuel farm upgrade. And then there's also stuff that is not a benefit to the private side, which would be the non-aeronautical streets and whatnot. A big portion of that stuff is actually on the commercials, leasehold areas, so they would end up having to pay for, you know, like the small parking lot next to where my office is, that's on a Papillon or Monarch leasehold, so they end up having to maintain that.
And then, I guess I'll just also end with this comment, is just that I think it is important that we do maintain a support for our general aviation community, because I don't think you have the commercial side without that. I don't, I don't know a single commercial pilot, and I've met quite a few, who didn't start off in general aviation, so without one, you don't have the other. So I think it's really important that we remember that, and we are also a very community-minded community. I mean, the community is a big part of it. This, you know, their community is, like it was said before, it's no different than any other, I'd hate to call it hobbyist, because it seems to maybe be demeaning, but, you know, than no other person who is working towards, you know, the betterment of their, you know, what they consider that improvement of life. So, I just, you know, like Councilman Hoskins said, Councilwoman Hoskins, that it is important that we do support our general aviation community, but it is also important that we make sure that we are providing a reasonable service to the community as a whole, that we maintain, as the mayor had said, you know, this is, this is big. You know, the airport, it is, it's not, it's not the same as a baseball field. So there are going to be hard decisions that we have to make, to make sure that we are doing our best to make sure, but absolutely, it is on, certainly my mind, and it sounds like all the other council members' minds, that, you know, we do need to be sure that we are still supporting our general aviation community, so that they do not feel that they are carrying the burden when there is commercial operations using almost 90%, you know, have 90% use of that facility. So, it's just, it's a very, it's a tight rope that we have to walk, so.
Okay. I have only one more question, or two if it turns into that, but what's your recommendation in terms of the land leases?
My recommendation?
Yes. You know, I know we looked over those charts and stuff earlier, but just...
Well, here's where I run into a problem, ma'am. I'm not an attorney, so the only thing I can recommend is to go with what's in the contract. And that, that's kind of a gut-wrenching thing for me to just come out and say that. But really, I can't, I can't recommend you do something contrary to what's in a contract. I, you know, I would be, it would be irresponsible for me to guide you differently.
So, the balance between the legal, the contract, the requirements of the FAA, the understanding of it 20 or 30 years ago, versus, you know, what we, Councilman Adams was talking about, you know, that goodwill, the community, the general aviation, future of Boulder City?
Yes, ma'am. Let me, let me add just a little touch on top of that.
Okay.
It doesn't matter what you all decide, I'm gonna be doing my damnedest to make it right with everybody. I'm going to, I'm gonna work hard to make sure we've got a level playing field. Whenever it comes time to assess whatever fees or whatever, I'm going to be looking at that through a variety of different methods, to make sure that it's fair and equitable. So, I just don't, you asked a question that I don't think I'm at liberty to answer, other than what's on paper.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, Mr. Williamson, I appreciate all the information, Marissa, city staff, there's a lot to digest here, that's for sure, and, you know, it was one of the reasons I asked to have this workshop done, was because of the interest from the community, I didn't feel that I myself had the information that I needed for it. I know you have, you're still getting your feet wet here, you've not been here long, you know, you got to parachute into a hot zone, I guess you would call it. But, as I say, I do appreciate the information. We don't have long to go here, before we're gonna need to come to a resolution on this. I'm hopeful that we can get some draft lease language in place here very shortly, perhaps within the next month, so that we can take a look at it and offer our comments on it. It sounds like you have a pretty good handle on what you're looking at, as far as other fees go out there. I know you've told me you've done some research already on comparable lease rates for hangars, at least within Arizona, Nevada, New Mexico, Utah. So, I think that information is going to be helpful as well. You know, we want to do something that treats the community correctly, and treats the aviation community correctly. So I, you know, there has to be something in there where we can find a way to get this done, and information is always helpful, so I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And with that, we will then move to item number four, which is our final public comment period. We'll start over here.
I'm Kurt Goodfellow. I've been a resident of Boulder City for almost 30 years. I've raised my five children in these schools here, been a pilot for 35 years, and was among the first to build hangars down at this new airport. I flew into the old airport before the new airport opened, so I've been here a long time. We signed one of the original leases, and like our attorney here says, they are not clear, and there are, there are a lot of different opinions as to what these mean. When I signed, and I was one of the first, an original one, that the expected life of the hangar was gonna be 30 years, and that's why we had a 30-year lease, and my, my contractor's fairly clear that my personal property needs to be removed at the end of the lease. And then when you talk about transfer of title for these hangars, the legal term for what these are is personal property. We've all received personal property tax notices from the county for 30 years, saying... We've all received personal property tax notices from the county for 30 years saying personal property, they say clearly on it, personal property. So that's why people feel an ownership, because it is their property. So when we sell it, we sell it with a bill of sale. And so when my lease says my personal property must be removed, it's pretty easy to look at it and say, I got to remove my hangar. So that's where a lot of that comes from. The reversionary clause, it doesn't say anything about reversion. That word is not used, it hasn't been used until the past few years. And we have been, you know, as all this information just came out in the past few days, that all of you have studied about the AIP grants, the different airports, I think one of the best statements that's said in there is if you've seen one airport, you've seen one airport. They're all different, and you folks are under no obligation whatsoever to the FAA in terms of whether you decide to create new leases, whether you decide to extend leases. FAA money or funding has nothing to do with that. That's up to you guys. The 50-year thing, yes. And even as Willie has stated before, you can sell the hangar, you can take possession of it, sell it back to us, and you can put a 50-year lease on it. FAA is fine with that. That's no problem. As a matter of fact, if you look in the documentation that you've looked at, in the FAA Grants and Assurances, it says unless the users agree otherwise, airfill is generally may not exceed airfield capital and operating costs of existing facilities and services. In other words, you're not even supposed to, according to the FAA, take in more money than you need. And, and in fact, in other paragraphs in there, it says that you can be penalized for that. So I would suggest that you can probably get in as much trouble from the FAA in terms of losing funding if you overcharge or take more revenue in than what you're needing. And obviously, you can stretch those needs any way you want, but there's also a lot to that. And nowadays, what we're seeing out there in the aviation community is the aviation associations going hard after some of these airports and FBOs that are overcharging. That's where you're seeing the action right now, because a lot of people are overcharging because they're trying to generate cash. And one of the things that you also sign here is how the most important and overreaching or overriding themes of all this documentation is that we need to be self-sufficient, which we are. And kudos to you and all of you for that. You know, we've, we've got an airport that the FAA is happy with, and that's important, right? And we're doing that. And so when it comes to, when it comes to generating more funds through either reversion or allowing us to keep the hangars and pay more fees, I would, I would tend to disagree with Willie in that I think if we go with just what the contracts say, simply because they're unclear, I think we stand to get into more trouble doing that than we do to just simply create new leases, as you would say, you know, get an attorney, and I understand an attorney already has done work on this, to get new leases and move on from there, and just, even if you double the rates, or maybe slightly more than double, in 10 years, you've got your $2 million. You know, it's simple math. It's not hard to find out. And that's just with the extra, not including what we're already paying. And then the other thing I'd like to point out is the, you know, I've spent my entire life in the paving business. This is what I do. 35 years, I deal with paving companies and everything else. And in our taxiways, we're saying that there might be in five years a need to repave those. Well, they were just done. The FAA funded it. They were just done a few years ago. As you mentioned, the aprons and the taxiways were redone. There's absolutely no reason at all to be doing anything to those taxiways in the next 20 years. You look at all your Boulder City streets, none of, my street's old, 30 years old, right? When I first lived and I came to Boulder City, nothing's been done to those other than, other than ceiling and crack ceiling, which is about a $70,000 item, which I have a quote from the company that does that for Boulder City. So there's no reason to extract all these fees for such a short, or for such something that isn't needed. And I'm done with my time, but thank you so much. Sorry about the fast talking. There's a lot of information here.
Thank you.
Be back.
Over here, Mr. Martin?
Yeah? Okay. Rob Martin again. I probably need to talk about, because I've actually done a lot of research on this quote reversionary stuff. In reality, they're in nearly all of the leases all over the country. Also, in reality, they never get pulled, okay? I've talked to Salem, Oregon, I've talked to Oxnard, talked to Camarillo, I've talked to Goodyear. The reality is nobody ever does these, because that was never the anticipation. The anticipated rule here is that they will get renewed. That's what's, that is what is indeed assumed. And they have been throughout the country. And in fact, in Salem, Oregon, Salem actually said, we want to take them, we're going to try to make money off them. And the FAA said, you really sure you want to do that? And then all the hangar owners sued, and they were renewed. And that's frankly the way it's been going all over the country. I am not aware of, I'm aware of one, and that's Santa Monica, where that's going to happen. But that's because they're closing the airport completely. And I think it's 2026, it will be completely closed. So everybody's losing their hangars there, but they're losing the airport. So it's a little different situation. So that's the first point, and probably the main point in some ways. The other point is that if we look at the lease language, and I'd ask, you get an opinion from council, if you look at sections 13 and 14, what they say is, the city has the right to repair the hangars in whatever shape they're in and backcharge by way of increasing the ground lease, but there is no other obligation whatsoever. For instance, if there was a big windstorm, hurricane comes through, like it did about 15 years ago in Vegas, knocked down all those signs on the strip. Let's say it knocks down all the hangars here. There's no obligation to rebuild at all. There's no force majeure contract, there's no clauses like that in these leases. Basically, the city gets whatever there is as of June. And they say this happens in July. No, June 30 is the end of the lease. So when I wrote this memo to you saying I'm going to start taking all the doors off, and I may be taking the hangars down too, I'm not even sure, whatever's there as of June 30, the city does own, but it's going to be a mess. That much I guarantee you. And I really, really wish this wouldn't happen. And I would suggest you strongly look at the memo, talk to me, talk to anybody. This is, you know, unfortunately, this really is Brock Armitraut's fourth thing up to bat in the airport, and every one of them has been a train wreck. And this one's going to be too, for sure, unfortunately. The only other point I would make is, Ms. Folda had a point on, well, what about, what are they doing with new hangars? Well, the reality is GA is down, I think it's 30 or 40% in the last 10 years. Nobody's building new hangars. And the problem is, is that the world has changed. There were 500,000 GA pilots in 1972. There's about 320,000 right now. And most of those, by the way, a big chunk of them are ATPs and they're airline pilots. If you exclude them, if we look at the pure GA guys, they're down by almost 2/3 in the last 20 years. And the, you know, does the city really even want to own hangars where every year their hangar's going vacant all over the country at these little airports? I flew into Missouri one time because my son was out there, and I would guess less than 10% of the hangars were full. The rest of the airport was dead empty, and that was owned by the county in that particular case in Missouri. And the last point I would make is, you know, if you look at the city charter, you look at how GA is supposed to be done, it's in the best interest of the city to try to make it affordable. What you're doing is you're absolutely making it so it's not affordable. We're happy to pay our fair share. I mean, I, based on all those discussions I had with Kurt, and the irony here is, I drafted a lease that did exactly what he said we needed to have done. Exactly. He had five points or six points. I put them all in there. And he said, well, then the only thing to discuss is, is the range going to be, you know, 50% more, or 80% more, or a double? And he never talked about three or four or five times, by the way, ever. And then, what is it, three weeks later, he was terminated, and I was told by staff that they wanted to start anew. They've been starting anew for 15 years on this one. And it's just time to make a decision. And if, if it is my option five, which is do nothing, let the cards fall where they are, it'd be too bad. It's not good for the city, for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Fonstock?
I too would like to just thank you guys for holding this. I've owned the FBO for a number of years, and I've never seen this kind of interest from, from the city, so for that, I'm grateful. As far as, you know, the violations of the grant assurances, I feel that the city's already, has been in violation of those grant assurances for years. And they continue to be in violation. There's some really good questions that came out today. Unfortunately, a lot of the answers you got were misleading or incorrect, or the fact that the airport manager's only been here for a little while, and he's obviously got quite a bit of tasks to come in and try to pull this off. To answer one question on the fuel farm, you know, the city took over the fuel farm, there's a city code that states that the city's going to have competition with private enterprise. They're supposed to do a study. The city never did a study. The city likes to, you know, look to see what to do at this airport based off other airports. Well, if you look at other airports where the municipality running the airport, which in this case, it's the city, is competing with private FBOs, it's less than 1% of all the airports in the US, have the people that are managing the airport, and my landlord, in this case, also competing against me. So why are we in that business? To answer your question on, is the city making money off the fuel farm? They're losing, they're in, they have $500,000 in labor. I ran the fuel farm for years and did much more than just a fuel farm, and my labor costs were way under that. You can't make any money off of avgas, the jet fuel's down. The important question about the jet fuel tank, the underground tank, isn't the fact how much we've used it, it's the fact that we go through, what, 2 million gallons of jet fuel a year, or 1 and 1/2 million gallons of gas a year? So it's really important that whenever people go to work, they have jet fuel, okay? So just imagine this, if the above-ground tanks go down, where does the jet fuel come from? It doesn't make any difference how much we've sold out of the ground, we paid the city six more cents a gallon for them to take over the fuel farm, and they're providing less service. They're not there, and the fact is that the pumps don't work. Why does a pump not work? Because it costs $10,000. Who used to pay for it? World Fuels. They're no longer here, so now the city pays for it, so they're not going to pay for it, so we don't get the service. And we also don't get the chance to even decide if we get the service or not, they just stop providing it. It's just, there's so much more to be discussed in this one meeting, and I would love to give you guys better information than what you've been given today. At McCarran, or at Clark County, Clark County does have a lot of airports, and Clark County Division of Airports run those airports, but it's not true that they don't have FBOs. McCarran has independent FBOs. At that airport, they do not compete with those FBOs. It doesn't make any sense. You can't compete with an FBO when you're the landlord. So all the other airports in Clark County do have private, or do have, the county itself are from the fuel. You ask about the fuel and bringing bigger loads. If fuel sits for a long time, their price drops. You ask about selling the hangars, and does the city benefit when they sell the hangar? No, but the city also doesn't get a penalty when I, when you sell a hangar and you lose money. I owned 16 hangars at this airport. I sold every hangar at the airport I owned privately because of the concern of what's going to happen. I bought those hangars wanting to put people that were aviators in them. A lot of people had dirt bikes and boats and, you know, fire trucks and whatever else. I bought those hangars, put aviators in them, and started selling fuel to them. When the city started going off on this weird tangent about what's going to happen to these hangars, I put all of them up for sale. And the reason I did was because I was terrified. It's a large investment. You see, the airport has lots of zeros after it? Yeah, there is a lot of zeros after, you know, the investment. But think about this, I own lots of commercial property throughout the country. I have never owned a commercial property where I had people come to me and say, let me spend $50 million a year on your commercial piece of property. And that's what you have down there. You have private hangars, you have commercial hangars. I mean, I had to pay Michael Hawkes $2 million bucks just to get my lease, then $2 million into the dirt, then $15 million into buildings, okay? Think about that. And as a landlord, I'm just going to give that to you. So yeah, the airport does have lots of zeros, and lots of zeros come from this side and from that side. But part of the FAA's grant money is, is that it's expensive to aviate. The fuel's expensive, the seat belts are expensive, it's expensive. You have to convince your wife that you, you know, that it's worthy of going down there. And it's hard to convince them when you go down there and, and the city, the city's going to jack up prices. The federal grant money is to help enhance the people who want to aviate. The grant money is there for one reason, it's to subsidize the aviators. Certainly, you have to have a lot of money to aviate, but at the same time, that grant money helps the city get the airport, just like the city has just got through spending millions of dollars on the city ramp, okay? Millions of dollars. Who utilizes the city ramp? The commercial operator...
Please conclude your remarks.
The, the commercial operator operates off the city ramp for next to nothing. There's a fortune to be made off the commercial operator operating off the city ramp that would help with the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Yes, sir.
I hope you'll bear with me. I just drove 300 miles to be here for this meeting. And I'm going to be 80 years old in a couple of months.
Congratulations on both counts.
Thank you. I was hoping I'd still be vertical for the meeting. I've been flying for 55 years. I've been a serious supporter of Boulder City Airport for going on 25 years. I have one of the early hangars, and I've only, only used it for my own personal use. I've flown into Boulder in 10 or 12 different airplanes, and used to drive the front office a little crazy having them update the current in-number for the airplane that was in that I am an neuro-experimental scientist-psychologist. That's what I do. I work for the government in aviation. And all these good materials that are coming here today are so worth listening to. But maybe from a goodwill and a psychological profile, might be good to step back just a little and look at it in the big picture. Good planning and goodwill and doing the right thing, not shuffling the chairs on the Titanic, can be a pretty good idea. I think that all of us need to look at what makes a general aviation airport work, because it's a viable entity to the community, the businesses, the support. There's huge articles available for just how substantial general aviation is, and so important. Today, general aviation is a critical source of commercial airline pilots. Some of these slick schools that are cranking out computer operators for commercial pilots, not such a good and shaky thing. Some of you may have noticed just a few months ago in New York, there was a commercial airliner landed on the Hudson by Shelley Schillberger, and he did it because he was a general aviation pilot and owned a sailplane. If you'd been on that flight without him, you probably wouldn't be in this meeting today. That's something I'm going to think about here. It's such a critical thing at this time. Goodwill, the old guard, old air dogs like me, looking after the youth, bringing them up, getting them encouraged in aviation to face the consequences of it. Today's kids are reticent to do that. They're used to computer screens with reset buttons and escape buttons. They don't handle the high risk that's involved and the challenges of aviation without mentors. I'm an Airline Owners and Pilots Association mentor, and I've mentored Dr. Dave Pieria to Jacob Propulsion Laboratory in Pasadena, who's in an excellent position to promote aviation, as well as Laura, who's a PhD at California State University Fullerton in mathematics, likewise, someone that can help with general aviation. I can assure you that this group here before you now, if you go for this ugly putting it, you are doing a money grab by the city, and they will be furious at you for doing this. It's not necessary. You ladies here, I know it's the letter of the law, this gentleman's been doing such a fine job of expressing this, but you may not realize, but just for a few days now, you have profited by something remarkable. 100 years ago, you weren't allowed to vote. It was the letter of the law. And in 1920, that changed. So sometimes laws are not ethical, sometimes contracts are not the thing that should be upheld. The bigger picture, the ethical picture, here. Support your local airport. Do the right thing. Give them a chance to make this airport work. At California, where I come from, Chino Airport, the famous Chino Airport, Fullerton Airport, El Monte Airport... El Monte Airport, Bracket Field, tie-down aviation is down 80%. The young people struggling with their finances, trying to learn to fly, they can't afford to do it now. They need help, they need guidance, they need to know that old dogs will help them through this to become pilots because they're going to be flying the airplanes you're flying commercially. That's something you want to think about that's a whole lot bigger than these numbers you're throwing around. I hope you'll give that some serious thought. I'm a little like the guy that's going to plant a tree who will never sit in the shade of that tree. This is not for me, it's for the future. I think Boulder Airport's a wonderful thing, but if you do this to these hangar owners and pilots, they will be furious, I guarantee you, and you will lose their goodwill and support. I'll never have another thing to do with Boulder City Airport if this goes down and I'm sure that's expressed by them as well. I hope you'll think about that. Thank you.
Not that tall. John Gustafson, Boulder City resident, pilot, business owner. It's a great place. I had the pleasure to look at the finances from 2018 to June 2019 and they're not necessarily in order. They may be from a city standpoint, but from a business standpoint, they don't make sense. The airport was profitable by a fairly large amount in that particular period, but you can't see sale of fuel, cost of sale and expenses laid out like you would in business, which is what I do. Willie and I went over them and he got some answers on some questionable items, but it looks like the airport is profitable as an enterprise as it is. Going forward with projections, I haven't seen those numbers yet, but I look forward to doing that. And I think we can, as a community, work with the airport and come up with a plan that actually balances the books, doesn't create excess profit, get the FAA funding to do what it needs to and, and really have a good, normal relationship with the citizens and the city, the airport citizens and the citizen's citizens. The fuel farm, in my opinion, should go private. Get the city out of the fuel business, let the private people deal with things with cost and expense and get the fuel companies involved, fix a fuel farm, make it work for everybody, put a bug round tanks, take the in grounds out and balance that as well. It's quite possible to do that, given the resource we have in this room. And the last item on the agenda was the leases. And I, I believe in the two consenting parties can come to an agreement, solve this lease problem. We've been dealing with it for at least 15 years. There are some marvelous lease examples that are already built that address everybody's concern. If there's a 50-year issue, we're a minimum of 20 years out of that. So renew them for that 19 and 1/2 years, get them fixed, make the next set the same as the first set, make it easy. The airport, airport will make plenty of money, the citizens will like it, the people on the airfield will appreciate it and life will go on normal. City doesn't need a money grab. There's plenty of solar money coming in from the fields down below, right? If there isn't, there should be. That's all I got.
Thank you. And, you know, this, this wasn't really explained during the discussions about finances, but I want to clarify something. The airport is an enterprise fund. That means that it's supposed to be self-supporting, the money generated is the money that is spent there. That is now state law. So when we talk about generating money, any money generated from that airport must be spent at the airport. State law says that, okay? That, that's not something that we get to decide or anything else. The law was changed, I believe in 2015. It's very clear. Enterprise funds generate revenue and exist on the revenue they generate. So I just want to make that clear. Anyone else on this side of the room for public comment?
My name's Mark Delaney. I'm a 20-year Boulder City Airport resident, one of the flight leads of the Boulder City Veterans Airport Association. We do a lot of flybys for the Veterans Cemetery, Memorial Day, July 4th, those type of things for the, for the community. But I do, would like to say just a few things. One, when, first, thank you all for being here. This is very important to us, this is great that you're here and taking the time and you can see the, how many people are, do appreciate you taking the time to be here today. Willie has been working hard trying to get his hands around this whole thing and, but I think there's a couple of things that I would like to maybe put out as a different perspective. When he talked about the leases and he came in here and he said, hey, this, this contract says, it reverts, it says, in his, his concept was that a developer had come in, built the hangars, they were running the hangars, leasing them or renting them to us, and in 30 years, why wouldn't the city come in and say, okay, you've had your 30 years to make money on that group of hangars, but why don't we take it over and do it? There is no developer that owns these hangars. We own these hangars. And for you to take our hangars doesn't necessarily mean that we've recouped our investment from that. So you would just be taking money from us, taking our property. I believe the impression left was that after a 30-year of the, with the reversion contract, that if you renewed the contract, that, that you would be subject to grant insurance laws, perhaps the FAA would take money back. As the city attorney said, as long as two people agree to the contract, we can do that. Now I do believe there's a 20, 50-year total limit on, on the revert, on the contract, so we probably would have to stay within that limit, but I think there's no problem if we all agree that we can renew the lease and go forward, that there won't be a problem with the FAA. At least that's my understanding, the way I've read it. The other part that I thought was different than what my understanding is, as Mr. Mayor, when you asked Willie, is that when these hangars were built and the lease was granted, that the rate was artificially kept low in order to entice people to, or the companies to build the hangars. When we went through the lease, Brockham tried, 2006 came to us and said, hey, we want to redo the leases. And we said, sure, that's a great idea, let's do it. And we went through and to look at the lease rate, we looked at comparable rates. So it wasn't an adjustment from the FAA or anything like that, it was a comparable rate at the time. So at the end of the 30-year period, we're not looking to say, oh, we're going to bump up our rates to whatever U-Haul is offering down there for storage rates. It's a comparable rate to what's being done in the, in the, in the community. And I do believe, you know, and we've offered, you know, actually said, well, we're willing to go to comparable rates and maybe a little bit more because we know the city needs money in order to keep our hangars. But anyway, just a couple of comments, thank you all very much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Yes, sir, in the green, green shirt?
Hi, everybody. My name's Chad Hesterman, Boulder City resident for 15 years. I'm also FAA Safety Team Representative, just a volunteer position. I'm an active EAA Young Eagles, a volunteer pilot. I'm also part of the Boulder City Veterans Flying Group. I've been a past AAC, AAC member as well. And I own a hangar and I'm also an aircraft builder, built my own airplane. I wrote you all emails offering to take you up for a flight. Nobody's taken me up on that yet, but the offer still stands. You know, it, it does come, like Tracy said, it comes down to stability. I've owned, I, I bought from another individual, I've owned my hangar probably about 10 years and I knew this, the end was coming. And I don't know if the city's factored, there hasn't been any discussion about what is it really going to cost the city to manage and rent out these hangars? And is that something they want to get into? We've talked a lot about the fuel farm and how, how well that's going. Imagine this on a much larger scale about running 140 some odd buildings in various states of condition and the complaints about doors not working or roofs leaking and things like that. And then to do that at a cost by city, city employees. So I'm not sure that's been factored into, to some of the assumptions that maybe Willie has made. So I don't know how you guys give back to the community. Obviously, being on city council, it's a huge commitment and that's a big thing of giving back. Some of you may donate a few hours a week to Boulder City Aid. I choose to give back to the community by flying children on their introductory flights. So it brings them a smile, brings me a smile, it's obviously at my cost. Also, I, friends and family, I include them in the community of the airport. That is where all my friends are, they're at the airport. The, tomorrow at 10:00 AM, our Veterans Flying Group is actually participating in a flyover at the Veterans Cemetery. So if you see us flying over at about 10:40 and one of us going into a missing man formation, that'll be us. And that's something, that's our way of giving back to the community. And I hope you give it the value that it rightly deserves. So providing kids with a smile, a tear in the eye of the veterans' family, you know, these are important things. And my hangar is probably one of the least expensive, so I don't have a lot to lose, but skin in the game at the airport is important. And if you just have a bunch of renters out there, it's going to be a very different place than it is today. There is, there's got to be a win-win situation. Everybody knows fees will go up substantially, but I can be priced out of this. So I hope the city makes the choice from the heart, not just from the wallet. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott Miller, long-term Boulder City resident. Again, thank you very much for holding this meeting. Just in a sense of community, kind of a big scheme of things, anyway it takes a drive along Veterans Memorial and you see all the signs up on all those stop, all those streetlights. Those are the young kids from Boulder City that went on to serve in the military. A lot of those, like my son, my son's now an F-22 pilot serving the Air Force, he learned to fly in Boulder City. And the sense of community that this, this airport brings is incalculable. I know we're talking about terms and money and, but I've also traveled around the country and seen the number of airports that stopped being community airports because people couldn't afford it. And right now in this country, I'm an airline pilot and I see the problems we're having recruiting and training pilots in this country because it's come cost prohibitive. People just can't afford anymore and the cost between insuring an airplane and fuel and purchase and instruction and now added costs that we're talking about here in community airports, it's, it's getting to the point where we can no longer staff our airlines and the military is no longer putting out the pilots. So from a community standpoint, the airport is a center. In this airport, I, I know so many friends and neighbors from Boulder City that congregated that airport. And I hate to see Boulder turn into one of the airports that I've seen across the country that slowly become just dying entities that nobody can afford to, to go to, they're fenced off in the community, become commercial operations and that center of, of gravity that general aviation represents, I personally, I've had airplanes out there for the better part of 20 years, I've taken countless kids from Boulder City up flying, just like Chad, and introduced them to aviation. A lot of those kids, their signs are up there too, on Veterans Memorial. And I'd just like you folks to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. All the way in the back. And I do promise we will get to this side of the room.
Everybody's going to have something to say. I'm James Embro, Boulder City resident and hangar owner and I'm kind of nobody here, I've only been here six years, but I will tell you this. Mammy asked about the fuel farm and, and the, and the private enterprise. I'm a business guy, I'm not a fuel guy, but I can tell you that's, it's, it's about risk versus gain. And private enterprise would gladly take over that fuel farm based on risk versus gain. You might have to make some capital improvements to the, to the facilities, I'm sure, but you can find a company, BFE was doing it, maybe didn't like it on certain days, but then maybe liked it on other days. So there's options, there's all kinds of options. With regard to the leases, I only have one lease, so I just know what's in my lease. And I can tell you, you cannot add language that's not there. Therefore, there's no reversion clause in mind. And reversion means basically you give up your entire property. No, guaranteed in my lease, if I leave something on that property after my lease is up, I can't come back a month later or I can't essentially squat on your property, but I can take it all with me. You ask about the, the leases and how they're transferred, bill of sale, personal property, it's already been mentioned. Had we been paying lease taxes, then that would be considered the value of the property. But we've been paying personal taxes, personal property taxes. So we have real value in that as a person, like our couch, TV, what have you. Nobody wants to take those hangars now, nobody wants to take the property with them. They want to keep it. You have 50 years. Sounds to me like the easy solution, 20-year renewal, and again, add whatever language you want to add to the new leases as they're written, that then gives you whatever latitude you need at the, at the, at the end of 50 years. But it's a community thing. I'm a community guy. I'm here because I want to be here, it's not because I have to be here. But I wanted to finish raising my kids here. My son too is Air Force. He wants a flight spot. He's Embry-Riddle, he's got the best spot he could possibly have outside of the academy to get there. Why? Because he went to Joel's Flight School, Joel's since had, had to leave, because he went to Joel's Flight School. I have an airplane down there, introduced my son to that. It's critical to this community. We talk about pilot shortages, it's all over the news, it's all over everywhere. They're talking about flight safety and people making mistakes flying. Well, you can't fly a video game in an airplane exactly the same. So we got to get these kids out in the community and we have to get them exposed to these things with the, with the, with the introductory flights. That's amazing, that's incredible. And to the cost of this man, but he does it because he has a passion and he cares. We should all care. And it's a huge component of this community and I implore you to think about all of this. I'm not, just like I said, nobody, but I'm sitting here listening to this and I'm thinking, short-sighted gain, long-term loss, risk proportionate to gain. How bad's it going to be? Please, take that into consideration, take all of what everybody's saying here in consideration based on concerned people that care about the community because we wouldn't even be down there if we didn't care about the community. There's none of us getting rich being down there. Yeah, we got to have a certain level of financial capability to be there, but I don't see anybody running down there that's, that's overtly grabbing up money over, over this general aviation airport. I will tell you this, I see a lot more helicopters today than I ever once did and I've been there six years, okay? 90 something plus percent using that taxiway, 90 plus percent, uh, uh, commercial aviation running down that taxiway. I was in the highway business for 30 years. I know H-20 loading versus jetway loading, I built airports. I built roads and bridges and tunnels all over this country. That's the use on that, that, that now. So please, don't look at it like you got to grab up something for a short-sighted budget for the next two years. Yes, we'll all pay a little more because we want to get with market rates. But guys, we didn't write those leases, you guys did 30 years ago and none of us were here when those, when they were, were the instruments of those lease, leases. So don't blame us, but work with us. Thank you for doing what you're doing because it's, it's awesome.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Hey, why don't we start up front here?
My friend's with me. Mr. Mayor, council members, most of the things I was going to say have already been touched on by other have already been touched on by other people.
Sir, if you'd state your name, please.
Vincent Tolomeo.
Thank you.
The only thing left that I would want to say is I've owned my hangar here for seven years. When I bought the hangar, I paid quite a bit of money for it. The seller did not disclose to me about an ending of a lease. Nano Corporation did not disclose to me about the end of the lease. The city didn't disclose to me. The airport office didn't disclose to me. I had no clue that I was going to lose my hangar in seven years. So I'm into this for a lot of money, which I really can't afford to lose. I'm retired, fixed income. And I do pay property tax on it. I always thought it was my hangar. It happened forever as long as I paid my lease rent. And I feel that this is really unfair for the city to do this to people when they don't have to. My suggestion would be just, before you make your decision, check with the FAA and see what the ramifications are as far as renewing the lease for 10, 20 years for some of the people that are expiring in 2020. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Curtis Campy. I wrote you all a letter. Hope you all read it. Got responses from a few of you. First thing I want to say is you have a wealth of smart people, knowledgeable people, experienced people, people with higher education. And I hope you listen to what they have to say. And one of the big concerns, I love what this guy said. It's awesome. One of the big concerns, yes, the pilot shortage in the nation and we need to foster young people getting into aviation. I fly for Southwest Airlines. I've been around the aviation industry for 40 years. Yeah, I started flying just five years ago. No, just kidding. But my big concern, Southwest Airlines is starting a pilot training program too, where people aren't going to really get to learn to really fly. They're going to go through these computerized training programs and be in the airlines real quickly. And I guarantee you, those two accidents that happened with MAX airplanes overseas, if they were Southwest Airlines pilots, who are generally super experienced guys who've done a lot of different kinds of flying, those people wouldn't be dead today. And we have no problems flying that airplane. And I hate to see new pilots coming into our airline that don't have general aviation background like the rest of us do. I came to this community. One of the biggest reasons is because of the small airport and because I could buy hangars there. It was really important to me to come to a town that was friendly towards aviation and a friendly little town. And I did. And I own two hangars there. And like Mrs. Bridges brought up, you know, how are these things transferred? Well, I don't know of anybody out here who's owned their hangar for 30 years. Most of us haven't had them that long and we paid a lot of money for them. So when you look at how much we paid you guys for the leases per month, the quote that was given was probably the lowest lease out there. No, that's not our only expense. So if anybody subleases their hangar, they paid $100,000 or possibly more for that hangar. So we have big expenses in those hangars. And yes, I own two hangars out there and I use them both myself for aircraft, but they're bigger than what I need and I do sublease. So I do have two subleases, but I use those hangars as well. I just sublease some of the space. So I know you brought that up, Mrs. Folda. Just so you know, some of those subleases, the owners still use those hangars for their own purposes. I know you're concerned about financing for the airport. I am just astounded the amount of commercial operations, helicopter tours that are going on out at this airport and for this airport to have any concern about funding. This should be the richest airport in the nation, non-towered airport with the greatest amount of commercial business aviation going on out of there and the amount of tours out of there. If we can't charge a per-head fee because of some FAA rule that the aircraft has to land somewhere and come back, perhaps we could look into a waiver. We have tons and tons and tons of tours out there. And if you just look at the terminal building compared to the building that Willie's operating out of there, we're talking a $20 million building compared to a, you know, 70-year-old little spot. So obviously, they're making tons of money. We have to find a way to have them pay their fair share. When we talk about what kind of business is the airport in? The business the airport's in is they have tons of business out there. And it's not the little guys in the hangars that are making tons of money from that airport. So if we need to pull in money from anywhere, I'd like to see us pull in money from there. I had a million other things to say. I know everybody's getting tired and I can't remember half of them. But I'm sure we could find ways around some of those leases. Some of those leases with the commercial operators were signed decades ago when they were a 10th, a 20th, a 50th, the size they are and bringing in far less money than they are, than they have been. So I'm sure there are ways we could, this commercial services fee or something if we need money from the airport, not from the small hangar operators. And most of us, when we bought our hangars, I thought the hangar was mine. And I think nearly everybody here believes the hangar is ours. And we had never heard about that. Our hangar itself, the building goes back to you guys after the revision. I don't think very many of the hangar owners ever heard of that. So that's where we're coming from with the hangars. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. A red shirt?
I'm from the University of Oklahoma. This is Crimson.
My apologies.
Robert Merrill, Boulder City resident. Been a pilot for about 20 some odd years with a hangar out at the airport for about 15 and I was on the ACC for about 10 years and was part of the committee that worked on the leases 10 years ago. And I think we were pretty much there and then it just came down to the rate. And the rate at the time, I think they were wanting to charge more than what they were charging the commercial carriers out there. So it sounded like we were pretty close, but we just didn't get it across the finish line. I think we can get it across the finish line and it'd work out both for the city and for the hangar owners. I think Ms. Folda made a good comment about predictability and stability. And I think that's what we want. I don't think we want month-to-month leases or rentals. You know, when you rent something, you don't take care of it as well as when you own it or maybe have a long-term lease on it. And I would plan to fly another 10 years or so. I would like to know that I have a nice place for my airplane and I'm not going to have to worry about moving it in a year when the city decides all of a sudden to jack the rates up or whatever that's out of our control. I would also mirror the comment that the gentleman back here made about, does the city really want to be in the business of owning and maintaining these facilities and incurring the expense of the personnel to do that? I do not believe that the city's ownership of the fuel farm has been as effective and as good as it was when somebody who was in business was running it. And I would concur that I don't think you guys should be in that business. I know some of you and I believe you're going to do the right thing and thank you for your time today.
Thank you. I believe your shirt is blue, but I could be wrong.
Blue Angel, blue.
All right.
I'm Brent Dana. I'm a rocket scientist. Just kidding. I like that one. I'm a real estate appraiser and I own a real estate company in Las Vegas. I live in Las Vegas and I keep my plane here. And I keep my plane here because it's a nicer airport. It's enjoyable to fly in here. I can afford a hangar here. I rent one, but I'm looking at buying one. And I won't buy one now that I know that there is this kind of problem going on. And so while we're doing a workshop, I wanted to talk a couple of things here as we're trying to make the airport stronger with less money. Why we're paying $508,000 for four people to work here when a guy did it for 20 hours a week, one guy? According to Richmond, that guy's got to go. That whole plan's terrible. Whoever's running a business like that is never going to be able to make any money. One guy doing it for 20 hours a week is now replaced by four guys and paying $508,000 and they wouldn't even put it on the screen the correct way. That jet fuel, nobody's going to pump gas for jet fuel. Nobody's going to do it by hand. It costs $50,000 if you do a hot start wrong on your turbine airplane. And so you drive over to where the pumps are, jump out, fill it up. If it starts wrong and it's called a hot start, it costs $50,000 to fix. You don't need jet gas in that pump. The other thing, there's a restriction on the fuel trucks. You can't get, there isn't competition in all this. Certain fuel trucks can't go past certain points on the airport. I don't know why that is and why the city wants to be in the business. I heard a comment, why don't we sell it to Clark County? Well, that's the stupidest thing in the entire world. You've got two FBOs that are going to be willing to buy your fuel and do the whole thing for you. Why not just give it to them and let them deal with it? The other thing is, when it comes to these hangars, here's what the reality is. We're talking about a reversion clause, same as Mexico has, same as England has, all these different things. Here's the problem. There has been an implied contract for 15 to 20 years with these people. For 15 to 20 years, you've heard man after man get up here and say, I didn't know the city was taking my property. Well, when it does go to court, and it is going to go to court if you try and take it, you're going to have 128 witnesses saying, yes, the people at the city told me that, just like that guy said and that guy said. And it's going to be nothing but a problem. Now, when we're looking at $56 a foot or $56 a month for a hangar, that was done for one reason only, and that was to encourage building, to encourage growth. Because you weren't going to get people to go out and spend 100 grand and then go and pay $300 a month to you. That's changed. Today, they will. They'll spend the $300 a month. They'll spend whatever they need to do to do the lease. And you can do a 50-year lease. We keep talking about the FAA doesn't want it to go more than 50 years. The FAA doesn't want contracts to go longer than 50 years. That's what it is. We could start today and say, hey, look, we want to do a 50-year contract. We'll pay you $300 a month. The city'd go from $19,000 to $408 grand a year. And everybody would keep their own stuff. That would eliminate that problem. The other thing is, as far as I was told when I was trying to figure out the lease, that there has been a couple of people that have formed associations in there and they have gotten leases. I'm not sure that's correct or not. But if it is, then there's already been precedent set that we weren't going to do it that way. And the other thing is this. We keep using the word stability. When we're talking about stability, it's because these people are trying to make decisions on what to do. I want to spend $100,000 on a hangar. I'm not doing it if I don't know what the rules are anymore. This man bought a hangar in August. If you're going to come in and take it in a few years, what's that going to make his rental cost? 20 grand a year to put an airplane in there? You have it painted every month or every year for 20 grand. There was another statement made about takeoff and landing fees, okay? Takeoff and landing fees are made to detour. McCarran has $100 a month or $100 every time you touch your wheels down there. That is to discourage people from landing at McCarran. It's the only airport. No other airport has that. LAX has that same exact thing, okay? You don't put landing and takeoff fees. You can do overnight fees, like you said. And so it's a penalty. I think that's all I had to say. The issue's not the lease, it's the terms and amounts. The FAA will allow us to do 50-year leases and we can just do them every year. They're going to continue on and we'll just figure out what the new rate is. One more thing. Even if we did $300 a month and every year there was a 3% increase for cost of living, keeps you at the same money and makes you money all the way through. It was just a bad deal for the city, I guess, when they did it to begin with.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Mueller. I'm a resident of Boulder City. I've been here since 1979. I soloed at the old Boulder City Airport. Been involved at the newer Boulder City Airport since its existence. I'm a flight instructor. I've been involved, in fact, every one of my students has been a Boulder City resident. So I'm giving back to the community. The fact is, is that I'm one of also the original Nuno hangar tenants. Originally, when this thing came down, Nuno was asked by the city to manage the hangars. And the reason why was because Boulder City didn't have any expertise. That was part of the agreement when they built the Nuno hangar, a lot of 28 hangars. The hangar tenant was given a bill of sale for the hangar. I have the receipt. It's personal property. Now, I'm coming to the twilight hours of this lease, so reversion language doesn't exist. In fact, everybody who's been right in their comments about this context, the city does have right to those hangars if it exists after the term of the lease. But up until that point, I am allowed to remove my personal property like one of the other people said. They said they have to remove their personal property before the expiration of the lease. Hey, I've got a receipt for my building. That's personal property. Validating it also with paying personal property tax. It's a pretty open and shut deal. Now, I didn't plan on coming up here to talk about all these different things. I was only going to say two things. One is we've got six months left on this life. I don't know what I'm going to do from now until July, but I need to come up with a solution. But not only me, but you guys do too. Because I can tell you right now, without any kind of renewal of leases and you accommodate these or commandeered these hangars, you're going to end up with 28 people putting airplanes somewhere. You don't even have 28 transient slots to put airplanes. There's not going to be any room on the ramp for airplanes. So again, logistics, I'm sure you can find something. You can close off one of the taxiways or something like that, like you do for special events, maybe make it accommodated work. I don't know. But my whole goal was to bring up that whatever your decision is going forward, I hope that you put the sense of urgency to it. It's incredibly important because as Representative Folda said, that stability is everything. And we're looking for that stability going forward with it. Decisions sooner than later is, as you said, Mr. McManus, I totally agree. Time is of the essence. So I would hope that you folks take care of that really, really quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to interrupt real fast. And I meant to do this at the beginning of the meeting, but I have a hard stop at 4:10. Otherwise, my children are stranded and that's not good. And I think, I apologize because I wanted to hear everything we had. This just went longer than expected, so I hope you all excuse me.
Thank you. Thank you. In the back there, sir.
Matt Reagan again. So what I was talking about as far as, you know, as I commented prior to the, in the first public comment, is about the frustration of how I have done this research on the... And the research was the minutes that took place that got us into the fuel farm. And in the minutes, city staff had a full report and that's, I think it was July of 2018. They made some great projections. And some of these projections were, we're going to make so much money on this fuel, we're not even going to even entertain any more additional income. And that could be landing fees like the city of Glendale has, where they charge, I believe it's like $4.90 a landing at the commercial operators. So clearly, it's done at small airports. And so to sit there and say that we don't want to do it, we're bypassing other sources of income and we're essentially going to say, okay, let's gouge these guys. Or I'm going to use gouge. I'm sorry about that. Is that we're going to try and search income from the local residents. Essentially, we have now a parasite-host relationship. And so that we've gone from $100,000 to the only numbers that were up there was $36,000 in total revenue. Well, and that was a line item that the total fuel cost was. And that was also 50,000 gallons total per year. With that, they said it was $70,000 in expenses. So clearly, $36,000 minus 70 is what, $34,000? That means we lost $34,000 operating on fuel that was supposedly, was said by city staff, $100,000 plus income for this airport. Okay, now we'll move on to it. In Perump, they opened up a fuel farm and the fuel price is currently $4. In Perump, they opened up a fuel farm, and the fuel price is currently $4.35 a gallon. In Boulder City, it's $4.95. Clearly, World Airways, who operates the fuel pumps in Perump, is not doing it at a loss. They're not in business to lose money. So somewhere along the line, the private sector is very efficient over in Perump, and that's at Calvada. It's a private airport, and I don't know what the leases are and the agreements, but as a consumer, I actually go there, my uncle lives over there, and I fuel up every time. It's a great deal. So as a consumer side, it's a very good deal. All right, so now, Mr. Morris said, and it's already been repeated, that these, we have, when you have two parties, and in this case, when Mr. McManus, or Mayor McManus, said, can we open, you know, can we open or entertain, opening up the contracts, and that's on the commercial side. Mr. Moore says you have to have two consenting, or two people have to agree to it on both sides. Now, obviously, the sweetheart deal that the commercial side has right now, and they're very inexpensive, they say, "No way. We're never going to open up." So they're not going, that, I could never see the commercial side opening up unless it's a sweetheart deal. Now, let's move it to our side. That, again, we go back to framing an argument. You're going to this, the city staff is now saying, "It's reversion. We don't have any choice." Well, this also does not entertain, or does not even recognize, we have two parties. All it takes is the city to say, "Yes, we want to extend." There's not a person in this building right now who's, who owns the hangars that will say, "No, I don't want to extend." We all want to extend. So then, therefore, the party who does not want to entertain any length or extension on this is the city. So there's only one thing that I can see out of this, is the city wants to essentially run the hangars. Because everybody on this side, as far as the city, like I said, is, as a hangar owner, we all want to extend. And so with just taking Mr. Morris, who's a very skilled attorney, he clearly said, "Yes, you can extend, regardless of the reversion, or whatever comment, or whatever wording there is. We can do whatever we want." Again, now, going back to the, I've done a lot of studying on this, we seem to think that we've got 50 years. 50 years is what the FAA says. That's a letter in suggestion, that they don't want to sign leases for greater than 50 years. That doesn't mean 50 years total. That means like 30 and 20. It means 50 years total, which means that, that we could sign a 50-year lease right now because it's a completely new lease. And that's in, and these are just suggestions. And what I'm finding so frustrating about this is the inaccuracy of information that's being presented to you all as being gospel truth. And it's simply, I don't, I mean, there's a strong disagreement as far as what has been represented, which was represented, and it took over an hour to do that. I'm not saying I disagree with everything, but there's a significant amount. And that's what, that significant amount is also what led us to get into this fuel farm and these misrepresentations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
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 Okay, everybody say bye now.
Bye.
Okay, Rich Moynihan again. I think you're in luck because most of these guys have said everything that I wanted to touch on. But I did talk about, we started this process 15 years ago on renewing and extending these leases. That was something the city instigated, not the private hangar owners. And it was because there were 13 different leases covering all these hangars, and the city considered them all poorly written, and they wanted one standard lease. And part of that poorly written is this thing that is referred to as the reversion clause, as most of us feel. And it's not in every lease at every airport, but it was in our 13, not all of them, but almost 13 poorly written agreements. And that's why we started this thing so long ago. And Matt just touched on the 50-year thing. That's a guideline. You know, what happens at 50 years? The hangar's 50 years old? We can't do anything with it? That's not right. It's a guideline for the length of the agreement. We talked about the salary at the airport, and, you know, obviously, it takes more than 20 hours a week to run this airport nowadays. But we did, for a long time, we went to one full-time employee, then we went to two full-time employees. Now we've got four. And between that two and four, there hadn't been that much additional work that the public can see. So we're talking about increasing income. We also need to decrease expenses. And I think that needs to be justified. I had no idea when that, when Willie said that number, and it was well over $500,000. I was dumbfounded because I figured it was considerably less than that. Well, we're worried about, and I talked about it before, and so did the councilwoman, about the stability. We're worried about renting from the city because we've seen how other things have run out there, i.e. the fuel farm. When this thing was presented two years ago by the current airport manager at that time, we were all sold a bill of goods, including the city council that was sitting at that time. We were going to get new equipment. We were going to get, we were going to make a ton of money. And as Matt said, they put aside raising fees because they were going to see how much money they made on the fuel. It was a bill of goods. And we're worried about those people managing the hangars that we want to rent. So that's our main concern. They touched on most of this other stuff. One thing I was surprised, we've had a number of meetings with Willie, individuals and groups of two or three about this thing over the past couple of months, or probably since he got here, because that's when this thing came to a head, because before then, we thought we're all getting new leases. And in those meetings, or before those meetings, Claudia asked him a question, "Well, what's your recommendation?" And he said, "Well, go with the reversion." In those meetings, he led us to believe he didn't care what happened. He said, "I'm going to present five different proposals to the city council, and I'm going to let the city council make that decision, and which you're going to make whether you hear those five proposals or not." But that's kind of an about-face, which really surprised me. And you don't have to take the hangars, and as far as the FAA is concerned, you have to be self-sufficient. So we're not asking for a freebie. We want to pay our way. And if you renting the hangars to us on a monthly basis equals so much money, as opposed to us still owning the hangars, paying increased ground rent, and us paying all the expenses, the FAA doesn't care. They're not going to come and take our AIP money, you know, because it's a wash. Why would the city want to be involved in taking care of 30-year-old buildings if they're going to break even? As I said in the AAC meeting, as president of our little association of 16 hangars, a month ago, I spent probably 10 hours changing taxi, or light bulbs on the outside of the hangar, bulbs and fixtures and everything else. Are we going to get that kind of service from the city? Probably not. And if we do, it's going to be the city electrician who's getting paid who knows what. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello, Mike Caruso. So yeah, I'm the guy that bought in August, and it's coming up. But, you know, what definitely was not discussed was that there was a possibility of the hangar going away. What I was purchasing was property. Understood, it wasn't the land underneath the hangar, but the actual building itself. So I purchased the hangar at a little bit of reduced rate due to the condition of it. It's leaking, the insulation's falling down. It's not that great. The doors are sticky. Anyhow, and if you haven't done so yourself, I highly, highly, highly recommend reading the Nuno lease agreement. I did numerous times. I also handed it to peers to read through it, so that they can kind of tell me what they thought. And we all read it the same, and that is that we do own the hangar. Nowhere in there do we give the hangar back unless we decide to leave the hangar to the city. Nowhere in there does it say that the hangar is not our property. And as everyone has already said, we have been paying property tax on that hangar. So that was, you know, the understanding, or else it would be unbelievably foolish to buy a hangar just a few months before it expires. So that's that. And then something else, my hat's off to both Chad and this gentleman here. I started flying with EAA in 1990 at 10 years old, Chapter 565. Flew with those guys the second Saturday of every month, from 10 years old to 17 years old, and I got to fly with an old WWII veteran. Now, I did get my certificate right here at Boulder City, and on a takeoff attempt before I got my solo, there was a dust devil that blew across the field, ripped the plane up into the air before it was ready to fly. My flight instructor froze. Because of guys like this gentleman, I was able to fly the plane out of that when my instructor wasn't available. So they all make very, very valid points. You're not going to learn from a book or a video game how to really fly an airplane. These guys put sticky pads over your instruments so you know how the plane flies versus just looking at the instruments. So my hat's off to these guys. That stuff is extremely important because it's a different way to know how to fly an airplane. So thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kristy Moore, and I own a hangar out at Boulder City, although I live in Henderson on the south side, which a lot of people do that are out there, we're not just Boulder City residents. Couple of comments that I wanted to make on things that have been said here. I wonder if you can collapse an underground gasoline tank if it's showing no leaks and it's empty, without having the expense of having to take it out of the ground. And I own an auto lot up in North Cordillane, Idaho, and I know that if there is an underground leak, every owner that's ever owned that property since the time that tank was put in is responsible for the cleanup. So better get it out of there before it starts leaking. I know that the lease seems awfully low, having been done 30 years ago, but 30 years ago, that was quite a bit of money for the lease of a hangar. Plus, it was leased to the builder, who then turned around and sold the hangars for a nice profit right away. I mean, Nuno's took over the lease handling, the management of the hangars, but for the most part, all the hangars were sold to someone else. Now, we've owned this hangar for over 20 years, and we pay personal property taxes on it, and we were never told that the lease was not going to be extended. In fact, we were never told that until like last year. Everyone anticipated that the leases would be extended, and everybody's made their plans that way, and they kept their airplanes where they have, and used them the way they like. And this is the best place in the valley to have a private hangar, because the other places are too busy. They're too commercialized. And even now, this one's getting to be too commercialized with all those helicopters. We were coming in for a landing the other day, and there's a helicopter sitting right in the middle of the strip, on the main runway. And we were in contact with him, and he says, "Oh yeah, I'm leaving right now. Oh yeah, I'm picking up right now. Well, I'm doing a test right now." And we were almost on top of him before he moved that darn thing. It's a safety hazard. And yet, they use the runway 90, what was it, 89% of the time? It doesn't leave much for us private owners. I know they said an unimproved airport gets $150,000 a year from the FAA, but this airport is much improved, so how much does it get? A lot more than $150,000. And that's not counting the repairs. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I want to make this short and sweet. Okay. That's my wife. I'm David Moore, and we own four hangars out here, actually. And anytime we get a hangar, we usually go through and inspect the hangar and make sure that it's in good shape. And the big problem I've had is with doors. In fact, I think I said at the AAC meeting I went to, that one of the doors I bought was out on Row 1, so it had a fold, a bifold door. And it wasn't working right. It was noisy. So I called a door company to come out, just to give you an idea of the cost here. I had a door company come out, and the guy did an inspection on the door, and says, "Okay, need to be lubricated." And oh, by the way, do you notice that this drive sprocket on your, on your door is about ready to walk off the end of the shaft? And I said, "What would happen?" And he says, "Most likely, since it's a double-shafted motor, it just would be hard to come down, but there is a chance it could fall." I says, "Well, for God's sakes, fix it." So all you guys who own hangars with the roll-up, the bifold doors, check your sprockets, make sure they're tight, so they don't walk off the end, and lubricate your doors. Anyway, on my personal hangar, I have a rolling door. It's an old Nuno hangar. It was built 30 years ago. And it has a rolling door, big rolling door, hell of a thing, 16-foot tall, 46-foot wide. And it got to where I could not push that thing to open it. It was just terrible. So I called the same company out, Crawford Doors, anybody wants to know. I called them out and says, "Hey, take a look at this door. Tell me what's wrong." And they says, "You need new rollers." What's that going to cost me? They're 30 years old. Okay, it cost me over $5,000 just to replace rollers on the door. Is the city willing to accept something like that in these older hangars? That's a lot of money. The other door that I had to have repaired, greased and repaired, that was $2,500. And I also own six hangars over in North Las Vegas. I've replaced or repaired two doors over there, again, another $2,500. I had a G5 Gulfstream tried to park in my T-hanger, so that was another $5,000. That was $5,000. I think the insurance picked up most of that. Anyway, that's another story. But again, it's repair, 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 especially with, with hangars. If you get renters in there, trust me, the city's going to pay the whole thing. Oh, and as a final note, I think I remember, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I remember that when they had the appraisal of the airport 15, 15 years ago, 12 years ago, whatever it was, guy came out and he gave all these speculations on what we could do to make the airport more efficient and run better. And he, one of the things he said was, "The city needs to take over the fuel farm. You people are giving up $250,000 a year," I think was the price he gave, "in taxes because you don't have, run the fuel farm." How's that working? Okay, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a quick.
Sir, behind you.
Been in Boulder City residence since 1990. Have two hangars, airplanes. I'm a retired corporate pilot. I got caught buying my hangar in the middle of the negotiation that Rich Moynihan was talking about, that was initiated by the city to consolidate all of the hangar leases. And so I was negotiating with the owner and decided I'd better go get some counsel about this extension or renegotiation. So I went to Brock Armentraut, who is, everybody knows, in charge of the real estate ventures here in Boulder City, and told him that I was interested in buying this hangar, but I understand we're coming, lease lengths are going to determine the price, and if I buy it at all or not. And he said, "Oh, don't worry at all. We're renegotiating the leases. The ground leases will be renewed, and you'll be in great shape." Well, I'm not in great shape now. If this doesn't transpire, I will be paying over probably $75,000 to $100,000 too much for the hangar. And that hurts. So I hope we can take some of the, and I'm not alone, other people are in the same situation. So I hope we can take some of the, and I'm not alone, other people are in the same situation. And when you work all your life to be able to enjoy sport aviation and have a retirement place and use the lake, that's why I moved to Boulder City. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir? Again, behind you, and you've had your opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mark Leesberg. I was born here in Boulder City, just a couple hundred yards away. I attended 5th grade about right there, in a seat located right there, and I looked out those windows in 5th grade, and I dreamt about the day I could fly those airliners that I saw going past those windows. My family is very steeped in aviation history in this town. And there's very little that I can say at this point in time that can support any better than those that have spoken before me. So I'll be brief. My hangar at the airport has been in the family since the airport was built. In 1972, the city of Boulder City issued requests for proposals at the old Boulder City Airport for an FBO. My family was selected as the FBO, and we continued in that capacity for 18 years. When the new airport, and we provided those services to the general aviation public during that timeframe, but the new airport was built and opened in 1992, the FBO was issued to someone else. We continued to operate at the new Boulder City Airport for a number of years, until such time, 2003, we closed our doors and terminated operations. In the 40-plus years of flying commercially in the Grand Canyon, Lake Mead Air, never hurt a passenger, we employed over 367 fledgling pilots that began their aviation careers at Boulder City Airport, and now are manning the cockpits of commercial airliners throughout the world and corporate aircraft. We take things like safety very seriously, we took maintenance of our aircraft very seriously. And it's important for something that hasn't been mentioned here tonight, today, to be brought up. The current users of the airport, primarily the commercial operators, aren't all on the same page. I've watched for many years how things are done at the airport in the way of traffic patterns. Everybody's on their own agenda down there, helicopter operators primarily, not so much fixed wing, fixed wing meaning airplanes. But we have four different commercial operators of helicopters there that all are on their own arrival and departure routes. They come and go as they please, they conflict dramatically with the fixed wing that operate from that airport. And you mark my word, having been a lifetime resident of this town, you mark my word, it's not a matter of if there's going to be a catastrophic event at that airport, it's a matter of when. These helicopters are coming and going, and they're not giving priority to people that are already established in the traffic pattern at that time. And they don't seem to want to yield, they think that they own the airport, and it's an atmosphere that's volatile. And I encourage the airport manager to address it. Because they have tried to meet on their own, and they have tried to iron some of their issues out, but they can't seem to do it. And there isn't a day that goes by, and I think everybody will bear out what I'm saying here today, that there isn't potential conflict with catastrophic events that happen at that airport. Now, getting a tower, is that the answer? Perhaps. But for now, it's, it has a degree of urgency, and I wish that it would be addressed and remedied. Again, I fully support a lot of what was said prior to my coming to the podium today. I have a hangar at the airport, and I put my heart and my soul into it. Both of my sons, I've taught both of my sons to fly at that airport, they're both commercial pilots now, and I'm proud of them. And I'd like to have something to hand down to them in perpetuity. It's a tough thing for us to accept the fact that we aren't in a position to negotiate extended leases on our hangars. I cannot articulate to you the importance and the urgency of remedying this problem and giving, like everybody articulated prior to me, some stability going forward. Thank you for your time, and thank you again for orchestrating this opportunity. For those of us that have a stakeholder in that airport, the ability to voice our concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will then close public comment and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much for coming and speaking and giving us your point of view on this.